All right, welcome to the Sunsign Meeting of the Terre Haute City Council. It is 6:03, January 4th, 2018. Roll call, please, Michelle.
Councilwoman Oller.
President.
Councilman Azar.
President.
Councilwoman Trossen.
Present.
Councilman DeBon.
Here.
Councilman Elliott.
Here.
Councilman Garrison.
Here.
Councilman Morris.
Here.
Councilman Nasser.
Present.
Councilman Nation.
Here.
All are present.
All right, thank you, Michelle. If you have not been to a Sunsign Meeting before, we do not take action on any items on the agenda. The agendas are up here up front if you would like to have one. If you are here to speak about something not on the agenda, we have 30 minutes to decide to do that at the regular meeting next Thursday. With that said, Michelle, did we get the first item on the agenda?
Resolution 35, 2017, designating an area commonly identified as 300 North Fruit Ridge, Terre Haute, Indiana, as an economic revitalization area for the purpose of a 10-year personal property tax abatement, JAG Court LLC, for confirmation.
Do we have a petitioner?
Mr. President, the petitioner will not be here tonight. There was a issue with the legal advertisement, and there wasn't enough days for it to be posted before the meeting. We are requesting a special meeting to be held on the 18th at 5:15 to take action on this item.
Any members of the public want to speak on Resolution 35, 2017? Counsel.
I do apologize, Mr. President, for the error in the legal advertisements the holidays got to us.
Yes, okay, Michelle. I'll entertain a motion. No, fine. Oh, yeah. Okay. I apologize, thank you. Next item.
General Ordinance 11, 2017, admitting city code, Chapter 6, Article 2, Police Department, Section 6-15, Police Merit Plan.
Do we have a petitioner for General Ordinance 11?
Mr. President, members of the council, Sean Kane, Assistant Chief of Public Police Department. I sent you an email last month kind of explaining the background of why we're requesting this change to our ordinance. And essentially, it amounts to there's, both nationally and locally, we've seen a decrease in the number of police applicants. As far as, even at the state police level, where they've had a third the number of applicants that they had in 2016 that they had in 2012. Since 1997, 20 years, our numbers have gone from down over 66 percent. We had over 300 applicants in 1997, whereas this last time we had 99. This is, as I said, a trend that's being experienced nationally by a number of organizations. Cities like New York and Dallas have had similar decreases. Some of these cities have had hundreds of unfilled budgeted positions that just go unfilled throughout the year because they can't have qualified applicants to fill them. I discussed a study in there that a lot of that is attributed to millennial preferences as statutorily we're required to only hire people between the ages of 21 and 35. The fact that we're focused on millennials, that issue is important. So we tried to look at what are these issues and what can we do at the local level to make some changes, try to improve our odds of getting more qualified applicants. Some of the things that I discussed in my letter, and I'll just go over them briefly, but as far as millennials, their expectations are different than previous generations. They look for more flexible working hours, working from home, flexible hours throughout the day, and those are things that policing just can't offer. We have to have 24-hour protection. So that's decreased our pool somewhat. In addition to that, their qualifications as qualified applicants have also posed an issue. Increased rates of obesity have discouraged them or made them unable to pass physical agility testing. Increased drug use among millennials has also made them disqualified from policing positions. And increased financial debt has also affected their ability to apply. In addition to that, the study also identified that there's been more competition in the private security sector over the last 10 years. That increase has also taken away from this pool, making it even smaller. Locally, we're in competitions with other cities our size. Some of them are offering lateral programs now where their seniority rights come with them to try to track them away. Obviously, these first three issues, there's not a whole lot we can do about generational preferences. Our financial situation doesn't give us the ability to be more enticing than some of these other cities. So we look to the fourth area, which was the length and complexity of the hiring process, which is identified. That's one area where we do have the potential for advantage over some of these other cities because, as you'll remember, our merit system is adopted by ordinance, whereas the others, only a handful of us of our second-class cities have this ability. The others are stuck with a two-year hiring process. So why that's an advantage to us, to understand that, I can explain to you the process and how this works. Every two years, we accept applications, and those that apply have to go through a process. It's an agility test, a written test, and after that, they go through a background and an interview with the merit board. They're then ranked. To give you some indication of how it went this last time, we had 99 applicants. The final ranking, we ended up with 30 qualified people that could pass up to those initial stages and were ranked. Over the next two years, then, when we have vacancies, we notify the merit board, and they give us the next name on the list, starting with the most qualified applicant and going down. The problem with that, when you go with a two-year list, is at about the six-month mark, you start losing people off that list. They're going to go to other agencies, usually when in policing, you're going to apply to several jobs. The longer that list is, the more people you lose, and we've experienced that, especially the last couple of years. We'll call up, we'll have four vacancies. We call up, this last time, I think we called up the first applicant, they took the job, the next three turned it down. And these are people that have just applied and went through this whole process. Some of them have other jobs, some of them have had other concerns since then. So the longer the list is, the more detrimental it becomes to us. The advantage with a one-year list also is, especially, one of our biggest resources here is ISU. Every year, you have a graduating class. We tend to try to target career fairs when we go in there, and it's an off-year, and you know, we're trying to sell the department as a place to make an application to, and they, "Well, you're taking applications." No, you can't apply until next year. So they apply the following year, and then maybe it's two or three years before they're actually hired. So we're losing a lot of qualified applicants in that process, and the same goes for those exiting military service. We're losing those. If you're going for, you want a job in policing, and you go in and you find out that you've got to wait two, possibly three years to be hired, you're going to look elsewhere. So where we see this as an advantage going every year, we're going to pick up more applicants that we might have missed otherwise, the graduating classes and the exiting members of the military. This is not the only thing we're doing to try to improve this process, but as far as this ordinance, this would help us tremendously. We're also going to streamline when they come in to do the physical agility testing and the written tests. We're going to do that in one day, whereas before, that spans several days. If you're traveling from a great distance, which some people are, the applicants we have, it's a burden when you have to go, you know, take a flight, go take a written test, come back, take an agility test, come back again, and then take an interview. So we're trying to make this more accommodating, if you will, to millennials. We're going to try to update our website so that they can fill out the application and enter it right there versus having a lot of forms when they first come in. We want to kind of move back some of the hindrances and make it easier, and hopefully increase our qualified applicants. And that's what we're asking to do with this ordinance, although I've talked for 10 minutes and I'm on the short of it. So I'm here to entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you. Does any member of the public have any questions on General Ordinance 11, 2017? Counsel.
Mr. President.
I'm sorry. Councilman Nasser.
Sean, I appreciate you coming to explain that. You always are very detailed when you explain why we're needing to do anything within the department, so I appreciate it. You had compared us to other cities, Class II cities. Are other cities doing one-year as well, like Bloomington, Plainfield?
Well, as I touched upon, there's only a handful of cities that can do this. Because us, Gary, and I believe Evansville, back in 1981 opted to retain Title 19 by ordinance, only those cities have the ability to go to a one-year program, whereas the others are all stuck with Title 36, which requires them to do it every two years. So this is one area where we actually have an advantage, in my opinion, to where we could do it every year, where those other second-class cities, if they're under Title 36, they're mandated by state law to stay with the two-year program.
So I know you mentioned some of the other, you know, whether it's private sector. What other cities do you think is our biggest competitor with retaining talent?
It's difficult, honestly. It's a combination of the benefits that they offer and the timing. I mean, if you just get out of college and these three are taking applications right there, you're going to go there. I mean, it's difficult for someone to say, "I want to wait two or three years to get this job." So it depends, from year to year, that's going to vary. I know that there, to some degree, where you want to live is going to play a factor in it, but because we're all going to be fighting over this increasingly smaller pool, I think we have to take advantage of anything we can to try to market ourselves better.
This seems like a logical step to make it go from two years to one year. You had said that there's other things that we can do. Is there anything that the council can do now or in the future to help out besides going from two-year to one-year?
This is the biggest thing, honestly. The other, like I said, the other areas, it's not really a lot that we can do as far as, you know, our financial situation doesn't allow us to compete on some levels. What I mean by that, I mean, you have, we have higher insurance premiums here than virtually every other city, where at 30 percent, our employees pay a lot higher rate. So, you know, equipment and things like that, as time, as the financial situation gets better, I think maybe we can address those things. But right now, the biggest thing that you can do by helping us is to help us with this part of it. We're working with the merit board closely to streamline the other parts of the process, but this is really the biggest thing the council can do to help us is just really, if I didn't mention, we've had a vote of our active members, and that vote went 99 in favor and five against. I think I put that in my letter, but if I forgot to mention it.
All right, thanks, Sean. I yield.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Nation.
I think this makes a lot of sense. Thank you for coming and explaining it to us, Sean. The idea of waiting two years to see if you've got a job or not has always been a struggle for me to understand. Now I understand, it's because most places are dealing with the state law that says that that's the way it is. So for the other communities that aren't Gary, or Evansville, or Terre Haute, they have to wait for the state legislature to change that set of rules. We're lucky that we retained that power here, I guess.
Absolutely.
And congratulations for coming up with a common sense solution.
Thank you.
Thank you. I yield.
Sean, it makes a lot of sense to me as well. You did say something, and I was curious about, you said you've had 66 percent decline in applicants.
Over 66.
Since when?
1997.
1997, okay.
Yeah, we had over 300 applicants then. This last time, we had 99. And it corresponds, of those qualified applicants that made the final list back then were in the 60s, whereas this last time, we had 30.
Okay.
And if there are any other questions, I won't be here next week, I have surgery, shoulder surgery, next Thursday, but if there's any questions between now and then, you can contact me on my email or phone.
Anyone else? Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Special Order 60, 2017, vacating a portion of a north-south public alley located south of 100 Kent Avenue. We received a majority of the departmental recommendations back, but not all, and this is another item that will have to be voted on at the special meeting, January 18th at 5:15.
Okay. Do we have a petitioner for this?
Yes, Mr. President, my name is Richard Shagley. I'm with Wright, Chagrin, and Lyer, and here with my direct representative petitioner, Matthew Trimbley. First, congratulations, Mr. President, and Madam Vice President, on your appointments. If it's okay, may I pass out an updated site plan?
Sure.
I'm not sure if this made your packet, it was presented last night. There's not a lot of difference in what you've seen. This will put aside with the next item on the agenda, which is rezoning. This vacated alley along with three lots. The petitioner is hoping to vacate this alley for the purpose of combining this with the property located directly off of Walbach Avenue, given the three lots that are behind this and combined one piece. With the proposed development by AKAL, which as you may recall, is here last month or last two months on, for rezoning for a convenient mark. It's the intention that if this is vacated, and then, if this is vacated, along with rezoning, will be sold and then developed, and a convenience mark will be built on this location. The change you see in here, compared to the site plan that's already been provided, is, if you'll notice, a darker gray stretch that runs along 19th Street. In the past, there is, I don't know if, I'm sure you're all familiar with 19th Street. You're traveling north on 19th, you get to Walbash, and you look down further, and it narrows to almost one lane. About 15 years ago, it was on the books to widen 19th. If you look at the GIS, there are sections between 19th and Chestnut, or even Liberty, where the redevelopment commission has picked up nine-foot sections. This stretch, this darker stretch shows that nine foot in the event that the owner is requested for that setback, additional property for that setback. So that's a difference in the site plans that you've seen. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak on Special Order 60, 2017? If you might be kind enough to provide your name and address for the record.
My name is Donald Hyde, I live at 1411 Poplar Street. I go by this street doing shopping business daily. Now, I would like the petitioner to go into more detail of what he's talking about because what you're talking about, 19th Street going north from Walbash, that is still a street, not an alley, and it would be most inconvenient for most of this city if it becomes nothing more than a stop.
My name, Mr. President. Mr. Hyde, if you'd like to. The alley vacate is right here. What I'm talking about is this extra nine feet that the potential owner would work the city in, in providing for the widening of 19th. We're just talking about vacating that alley right there.
All right. All I'm talking about is, would 19th Street be vacated?
No.
Then I have no questions. I'll keep.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Nation.
Richard, I'm looking at the strip that you just described, and I'm not clear as to whether there will still be a curb cut out along 19th Street at that end of the project.
There'll be a curb cut on 19th, correct.
So curb cut on 19th, curb cut on Kent, and curb cut on Walbash Avenue?
That's correct.
What about the billboard that's currently on that property?
It'll stay, and whoever the owner will be, have to follow the current guidelines with regard to signage on their property.
Would it be see that billboard go away?
Well, I'm not too sure if it's not that nine-foot potential right away, so there may be a future issue at the location of that sign.
Okay. And the barbecue shack will presumably go away too, right?
I think that's already been moved somewhere else.
Okay. Thank you, I yield.
Anyone else?
If barbecue's an issue, I could talk to the potential owners about providing barbecue at the convenience mark, so.
I guess I haven't driven out that way recently. I'm glad to hear that it's moved.
Thank you, Richard. Next item, please.
Special Order 61, 2017, rezoning of property located 100 through 106 Kent Avenue, and a portion of the vacated alley located south of 100 Kent Avenue. Area planning gave a favorable with conditions recommendation.
Petitioner?
Good evening, Mr. President, fellow members of the council. Again, my name is Richard Shagley. I'm here tonight representing petitioner, Matthew Trimbley. There's currently, on the site plan provided, you can see, along with the alley, there's three lots behind that alley. The hope is that these will be rezoned to match the current zoning of the property on Walbash for the building of a convenience mark. But the two, two of the three lots will primarily be vacant to allow for the necessary buffer between the commercial and the residential. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there any member of the public who would like to speak on Special Order 61, 2017? Counsel?
Mr. President.
Councilman Nation.
Richard, in the discussion with area planning, did they talk at all about what the buffering between this proposed commercial use and the existing residential uses to the north might look like?
I have asked for their clarification. They just want some screening to the residential. We've not had a response on what that screening would be. But the final will have to be submitted and approved by the city and everything else, though. And again, there's a 50-foot buffer. I have a feeling the people who, there's three lots that are potentially going to be rezoned and sold. On that is a house that needs to be removed. It's got some condemned signs on it now. And then, to the north, is a house that I believe has condemned signs on it, and then you have another residential who would probably like to see all of those go and probably welcome, and would welcome this development.
I'm curious, too, about lighting. These gas stations, convenience marks are pretty bright. Was there any talk about level of lighting, foot candles for bleed onto adjacent residential property?
The technology's pretty good in lighting as far as keeping it centered in on your property and not providing any disturbance to the neighbors.
So we're depending on the designers and the choice of lights, we're not depending on area planning or anybody else to say how many.
Area planning wouldn't have that say. And two, it's part of being a good neighbor and avoiding conflict, and also, in this section, you know, as far as environmental waste, to light the back to get to that home would take tremendous power. I'm sure there'll be some light behind the building just for protection, not only against bad stuff, but to provide some safety for the customers. And if you look to that corner, you have the Restore, you've got Sherman Williams, I believe, and then you have the Lighthouse Mission and their new, no, no, that wouldn't be Lighthouse Mission. Yeah, right, Case Meyer. So as far as lights in the bedrooms at night, that's not going to be an issue. And any light that's portrayed to the north won't be severe enough to cause, I think, any issue with the neighbors to the north.
Thanks, I yield.
Anyone else? All right, thank you.
And let me say, too, if I could, Happy New Year's to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you next week.
Next item, please.
Special Order 63, 2017, operating a tax anticipation warrant loan.
Petitioner?
Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor Deuce Bennett. I handed a, I guess there's four pages total, there's a, on top is a two-page executive summary, and then there's two spreadsheets to follow. So I'd like to kind of walk you through that here, just briefly, and then see what questions you might have. The TAW we proposed for this year is the same as it was in 2017. We talked about this during the budgeting process and included it in our spreadsheets, so there's no surprise of what the amount is or the fact that we're here asking for one. We have, we put it on the agenda for January just to get it taken care of because we always run into some interesting timelines when we go through this process. And so what we've been able to do to this point is, if you look at bullet point number three, First Financial Bank's board has already approved this in their last meeting in December, right before Christmas. And so pending city council action, they've approved a $4 million loan for us for this tax anticipation warrant. The interest rate went up a little bit. We've had two interest rate increases just in the last few months, and it's going to be going up again not too long, what we're told, but it's 4.46 percent, which is under prime, so they're giving us a very good rate that's under the prime rate. So that's already been taken care of. We don't have any issues with any delays or any problems with getting that approved. Much better financial position this time from their perspective than two years ago when we went to them, and better than last year. As a reminder of the purpose of this tax anticipation warrant, as you know, we take the funds in in January, we pay them back in December, so they have absolutely no bearing on cash balances, beginning and ending cash balances for anything. It's strictly for cash flow purposes. Since we get our primary distribution of revenue in June and December, we have periods of time, mainly the April-May timeframe, March-April-May, until we get our first early disbursement of taxes, and then the same thing in the fall, where we don't have as much cash on hand, since we don't have large reserves. And so the purpose of this is to make sure that, you know, we're paying the bills on time, we have to advance, you know, our pension payments, you know, we'll be $2 million into pension payments before we get any reimbursement this year, and so that kind of, you know, is helpful for us to continue to make all those pension payments. All our federal grants that we have to pay out, you know, it's federal government sometimes takes four or five months to pay us back, and that's just, that's the way the system works, and so we have to front that money, and then just timely completion of projects that we have in the summer, when we don't have a lot of our cash coming in until June. I wanted to be mindful of the fact that our goal is to reduce our borrowing, and we'll be doing that beginning this year. On point number five, you know, we borrowed $4 million in a TAW and paid that back, you know, at the end of last year, and then we have a redevelopment loan of $5 million. And our goal is when we, when that comes due in June of this year, that we'll reduce that, we'll extend a new loan from July to the end of the year of $2 million versus the $5 million. So that puts $3 million back into redevelopment coffers and reduces our borrowing then from $9 million to $6 million this year. Then our goal would be to reduce that even more in 2019. The last point I have on here is just really the fact that, you know, we continue to make financial progress, and it's obvious and very positive, but our set of values are still not going up. We don't have any other new revenue on the horizon, and so until something changes in that realm, you know, we're going to have to build up our own cash reserves. And so, you know, we're going to be in a much better position this year than we were last year, we'll be in an even better position in 2019, but we don't have, you know, $4 or $5 million of sitting in the bank that we don't do anything with, that we can just fall back on. We're not in that position yet. So the two attachments are, if you look on A, it will show you our operating cash pool with no TAW. So the first column, well, I guess if you look at the controlled fund section, and then the non-inverting fund, grant funds are kind of coupled there, and then our sanitary district bond funds, these are the things that are in the cash pool. And so the first column of January, these are the balances of each of these funds, what we predict them to be on January 31st. So as you can see, we think our total cash on hand in this particular pool will be about $3 million at the end of January. And then you can go across the bottom and kind of see what happens, and you can look at the individual funds to see what has the biggest impact, but it goes down to about $1.2 million in February, goes to a negative $1.5 million in March, negative $3 million in April, negative $3.7 in May, and then goes up to positive $10 million in June when we get our tax disbursement. So in that May-June timeframe, we get our first pilot distribution, and we get our property taxes, so, and then you can just follow it through the rest of the year. So if we don't do a TAW, you will see that when we get into March, then we'll be very stressed, and really, it hits us in April more than anything, April or May, we would be under a tremendous amount of cash flow stress. The second sheet, B, is with the $4 million TAW built into it. And so same rules apply here, mainly looking across the bottom at the total cash, you'll see that that would put us at $6.8 million at the end of January, and you can work your way across, at no point we go negative. We pay the loan back in December, and then we start, you know, the next year all over again. So if you look at May, you'll see we got a positive $268,000. My guess is it'll be a little better than that, but we try to be as realistic as we can. Each year, we tighten this up a little bit more, so at least we know we're positive, all the bills will be paid, and we'll still have a cash balance at the end of May that I suspect being, you know, a little bit more than $268,000. And then, of course, it jumps up to $14 million the next month when we get our tax disbursement from the county. So the bottom line is, next week, I would ask you to approve this. And as I said, I don't think there's any surprises here. We said it was going to be $4 million in our budgeting process. The council approved our spending plan for 2018, and this is, this part of it is to cash flow, those things that we need to do for 2018. Be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak on Special Order 63, 2017? Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak on Special Order 63, 2017? Council?
Mr. President.
Councilman Nasser?
Thanks for walking us through that, Mayor. We've already got a, an interest rate locked in.
Yes. I don't know how long that'll last, but we know at least through the month of January.
I've griped about borrowing and running our, our city budget on a credit card. This credit card interest payment will cost $178,400 over the course of 2018 or so, I guess, if we don't borrow it until February, maybe we don't pay a little bit of that interest. I think that it's important for us to continue on the course of not, of getting away from this short-term borrowing. And I'm glad to hear you saying that we're going to continue to do that. Thanks, Ayeel.
Mr. President.
Councilman Nasser?
Mayor, listening to your explanation on the TAW, you mentioned a couple, you know, phrases that kind of caught my attention. You had mentioned interesting timelines. What do you mean when you say interesting timelines with regards to the TAW?
Well, I'm not sure at the moment when I said that, what I was talking about. I just, it's not ringing a bell with me, an interesting timelines, but timelines of a variety of things. We have, when it comes to payroll, that's pretty static. That's pretty steady. We know exactly what that is. But we have a variety of other things that are on different timelines, very seasonal things that happen. All of our projects are on timelines, and things vary throughout the year. There's no, it's not, we don't spend the same amount of money every month. And so it starts slower, builds up, and so there's just a lot of things that interact with each other, and if you're not in it every day, you know, you wouldn't know when those months, when certain months are tougher than other months when everything hits. Maybe we don't get reimbursed for another two months when we thought we were going to, so it can create for some interesting dynamics to cash flow everything you need to do to keep everything on schedule.
Okay. Because you also mentioned surprises, so is that what you're referring to?
Well, surprises sometimes come with change orders on projects. Surprises come when we don't get reimbursed, you know. People complain if we don't make a payment in 45 days, and we're still waiting on the state to pay us for our community crossings grant. They owe us $600,000, and it's been over two and a half months. The federal government still owes us money for Margaret Avenue and Lafayette Avenue. We're probably $600,000 or $700,000 out on that for six or eight months. It could come tomorrow, it could come in April, you know, I don't know. So those are things you can't control.
Okay. And then you had talked about March was kind of like the timeline where you felt that things were going to start getting tight. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. And last year, I remember it's like deja vu. Hopefully, we can continue to be on the track where we're not continuing to borrow, whether that's from redevelopment or doing a tax anticipation warrant. But, you know, last year, this was bought before us in January, but we ended up tabling it until February. What were your thoughts of being us to table it until we get our 1782 notices from the DLGF, considering we had surprises last year with the order to reduce our general fund budget?
The TAW has absolutely nothing to do with the 1782 notice. The money comes in in January and gets paid back in December, and so it has no bearing at all. The state isn't going to look at the TAW. It has nothing to do with their calculation at all.
Okay.
Absolutely nothing.
So if the DLGF comes and gives us an order to reduce the budget, you don't think we'd have to do any shuffling of our cash flow issues?
Well, it has absolutely nothing to do with the TAW.
Okay.
It wouldn't have, it wouldn't be part of the conversation.
All right. Ayeel.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Oller.
Mayor, I know in number six you bring up about the assessed values.
Uh huh.
They've not, pretty much like stagnant.
Mm-huh.
I know there was a group, and I don't know, were you part of that group?
I'm on the steering committee, but I'm not on that particular group.
I don't know. Have we heard any progress or anything on, on getting these assessed values to where they need to be?
You know, what the Terre Haute Competes Group that you're referring to
Yes.
that was looking at assessed values, they, a couple of the members of that group had a meeting with the DLGF to talk about what can we do, what are our options, of which we know there's not many. But beginning to plant the seeds, not only with the governor, which I have done, and with our local legislators, which they have done, and meeting with the DLGF directly. And then last week, the DLGF commissioner was in town, and I had lunch with him, and we talked about this. There isn't a whole lot they can do either because statutes don't allow them to do a whole lot. But you're going to begin to see some action happening because we're not the only community that faces this. And the pushback, as the tax caps continue to affect people, they're starting to push back more than they have in the past. And so I think you'll hear some things, but I don't know how significant of an impact they'll have in the next 12 months. I think it's probably more in the next 36 months where you may see something change.
I'm just glad to see some of these.
And it's good that it has some support.
Yeah.
It's not just me standing up here saying it, and everybody's like, oh, the mayor just wants more money. It's not that. There needs to be a fair taxing system, and our commercial properties are not paying their fair share.
That, and also to make sure our appeal process is getting faster than, than what it's been going through.
Yeah, that's a whole nother, yeah, that's another issue that's, when we're not, we're pretty bad on that here, from what I'm told.
Yeah.
Other counties are much more, they're not two years behind. And I think we're getting caught up a little bit, but...
I think we might. At one point, we were further than two years.
Yeah, we were. I think we're closer to one to two years now versus three and above.
Okay.
Ayeel. Councilman Nasser?
Councilwoman Oller, I know you've been very passionate about our assessed values in the city, and I know you had talked about the state possibly helping us out, Mayor. Have you had any conversations with the Harrison Township assessor regarding our assessments?
The Harrison Township assessor is not where our problem is.
Okay. Have you had conversations with our county assessor?
Through other groups here locally, not individually.
Okay.
But we've had, she's come in and spoken to a couple of different groups that I was...
So you've not personally spoke with her?
No, not, not in a one-on-one meeting.
Okay. Ayeel.
Councilwoman Oller.
I have spoken to the county assessor and have brought some of these concerns to her, and she's aware of where I stand with them.
She's aware of my stand, too. I just haven't been able, let's say that, I don't think, I can show up to a meeting, but I'm not sure the other half would come.
Councilwoman Oller.
And to be fair to her, part of it is with Harrison because she can't control Harrison Township. Harrison Township has their own assessor. So basically, that assessor does the assessments for Harrison Township and commutes and gives those to her. So as far as the actual assessments in Harrison, her hands are tied, too, because we have a township assessor. Other counties just have the county assessor and no township. But with us, a few years ago, we voted to keep Harrison Township assessor, so, in her defense, a little bit, it does come from there.
Well, well, and I know you explained that, but I guess your saying it is not with the Harrison, but I'm hearing from you that you feel it is, Councilwoman Oller?
I'm not.
But I know you're not pointing blame. I'm just trying to educate myself.
I'm not getting into bank here, Councilman Nasser. I'm just saying that with it being an elected office, the county assessor is overpart of Harrison, but she doesn't have complete control of Harrison.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
So can I, so what I would say to that is, in our research, we found a few Harrison Township examples that we think need to be fixed, a few. I've found hundreds that are in Honey Creek-Terre Haute, Lost Creek-Terre Haute, Otter Creek-Terre Haute, those areas that have been annexed in in the past and aren't part of Harrison Township. That is, 90% of the problem is in that, those areas.
Okay.
Councilman Elliott?
I've got a number of questions. Probably isn't a big surprise to anybody. On the, on the spreadsheets down at the bottom, you, you use the term sanitary district bond funds?
Uh huh. Property tax funds. Not anything to do with user fees. Those are all separate. But sanitary bond, the property tax side of it has always been part of this pool.
Can I get fund numbers for that?
Yep, absolutely. I think there's, you know what?
I mean, I'd be surprised if bond funds could be pooled, but...
Oh, we've, we've verified that. That's, and I've got that information. And they've always, and they've always been that way, and then we checked on that before.
All of the others, I think I, I pretty much rec, well, than whatever is in this other funds number. There's the non-reverting grant funds, and then there's one labeled other funds. I'd like to know what that fund number is also.
Yeah, it looks like there's three, three of them. I'll get those to you.
Okay.
For some reason, the number's on here, the name's on here, but not the number.
Okay.
So I'll get you the numbers.
Then can we get the December balances, December '17 balances on this schedule?
I can add that on there, but I mean, it's just going to be estimated because we're not done doing all the entry. It's, and we, and we did this based on what we believe it's going to be.
But what I want to know is, did our balances improve from the start of the year?
Yes, and they absolutely have. We can put it on here. All right, I can add that.
The last financial statement I have is October.
Yep.
That doesn't help even what the, what the December...
Okay.
December balances are.
No problem.
So the, then the question I always have, if we just got a property tax distribution in December, why do we need to borrow in January? And this tells me we really don't perhaps until early March need the money.
Well, yeah, and in the last few years, it has been earlier, but now it seems to be honing in on March as the key.
And too much of interest is nearly 30 grand on that, on that money. So we're, I mean, to me, we're talking real money, and somebody else maybe we aren't, but to me, we're talking real money if we have to do some interest. Then I wonder why, why would we want to repay Department of Redevelopment by $3 million, which we don't pay interest on, and then keep the tax anticipation warrant loan that we do have to pay interest on?
I agree 100%. I brought that to the council before, that I would rather reduce the TAW, borrow from redevelopment, but the pushback from the council was get out of the redevelopment funds. I thought that was made very clear by the council on numerous occasions. Stop borrowing from redevelopment. So that's, I'd be happy to reverse that.
Is that the, is that the consensus?
I mean, we go back...
I don't recall having a discussion about that being the consensus. My, my, my reaction is to walk them both down.
Mm-huh.
You know, pro rata or something, but...
So, well, and all this giving example, I mean, we could reduce the TAW to $3 million and leave redevelopment at $3 million, still give us our six, and I'm okay with that. But that's, it was very clear by numerous members of this council that they wanted us out of the redevelopment funds as soon as possible because they can't do anything. I mean, I, I've got recordings of that over and over again.
Okay.
And if you need to hear me reiterate that, I'm willing to. If you're, if you need to hear me reiterate that position, I'm willing to. I understand that, that we could save some money on interest by borrowing more from redevelopment, but every dollar that we borrow from redevelopment hampers our ability to do things for the city that, that we just can't, can't, that we just don't have the money otherwise to do, period. Redevelopment money was not collected to pay day-to-day, Tiff District money specifically, was not collected to pay day-to-day bills for the city of Terre Haute.
I understand that, Todd. I mean, I just, I just want to know if that's our, that's our consensus.
And if we're going to walk that...
If that matters to me, I, I mean, it matters in terms of, for just that reason, interest versus their availability to use the funds. But if, if, if there's clear, if the mayor's got it right, then I'd like to know that for sure, that, you know, he's got it right.
I would also point out that there are two redevelopment funds that money's been borrowed from, one in my district and one in your district.
Yeah, four and a half million and half a million.
Right, four and a half from mine, half a million from yours. If we want to talk parity, how about two and a half and two and a half? So I'm willing to negotiate on that with, if, if the idea is of wanting to do less, but don't take it all from downtown, or I'm sorry, don't take nine tenths of it from downtown. Ayeel.
Councilman Elliott, I think you still have the...
Yeah, I do. And, and that's, that's where I guess we need, I need to get confirmed in my mind whether that read that you have to reduce redevelopment is...
That's fair.
Is total council...
That's my read, so help me with that.
I understand that's your, that's your read. I'll probably understand it a little better in a few more days. But is that plan, they said there's a plan to reduce the redevelopment loan to $2 million. Is that plan achievable?
I believe it is unless some catastrophe happens.
Is it plugged in here like a, like a 1782 notice that requires us to keep the debt?
Well, the 1782...
If we get a 1782 notice and we're required to keep the loan in effect...
But that's only the redevelopment loan, right, and not the TAW.
That could impact the ability to repay the...
It could, but the way we're trending right now is putting us in a much better position. Now, who knows what they do with 1782 notice, but we cut our deficit in half. So if you just throw away the redevelopment loan and look at the deficit only, we went from about $8 million to $4 million-ish, once we get the final numbers in. So we cut it in half. So now we're only talking about the DLGF looking at a $4 million deficit versus an $8 million.
I'd go out on a limb and say that I'm expecting a, a 1782 notice asking for a $3, $3.5 million cap. That's, that's what I...
We'll see. I don't know. I never expected it to be eight last year.
Well...
Just caught off guard by that.
But that's, but that's what our projected deficit is if you look at all of our budget forms.
Sure, but...
And if the law is you aren't supposed to have the deficits, and they, they cut it last year, I don't know why they wouldn't cut it.
No, and they may, and we'll see. What's, what our advantage is this year, though, is we, we took in a little bit more revenue than what we thought. We spent less than what we told them originally. And so when that 1782 notice first comes in, then they will get updated information from us, because all they have right now is what we submitted to them back in October. And so we won't know until 10 days after that.
And, and I'd like to have all that updated information before we have to ask, act on a borrowing agreement, which would include the November financials, draft of the December financials, draft of the December 31 cash payment, and 1782 notes. That, that's what I'd like to have, so that I've got current figures to analyze and...
Well, you know, our financial closing, I mean, it would be estimates for December. That's all it would be. We can do November at some point here, but, I mean...
But I mean, cash isn't going to change a lot.
No, but we've got to post everything.
But that changed in terms of what fund it's in.
This was a unique year because in, you know, in November, we did the reallocation of funds. Then in December, we did the reduction of the budget and all that. That has to all be entered into the system, and it's not been done yet. So we can't finish out November yet because our staff have been entirely working on the conversion for our new financial software. But, so we can do it soon, but I, I can't have it done by next Thursday.
No, I understand.
Yeah, okay, all right, okay.
I wouldn't expect...
Okay, good. I just want to make sure we're...
If we had that in January, that'd be, that'd be absolutely...
Okay.
And that would be exemplary performance to get it done
All right.
by that date. And then, when did you, when did you hear the 4.46 rate?
In December, at the meeting. December 20th is when they had their meeting.
Okay. Because the change in the corporate tax rate that was in the federal tax law that was passed a few days after that, to reduce the corporate rate from 34% to 21%, impacts their after-tax yield on this loan, so...
Well, we have it in writing, 4.46%, but it's probably only good through the end of January.
Okay.
And interest rates are supposed to go up in, in the next month, on top of all that.
Okay. The, so these are all of our pooled cash?
This is the pooled cash that we're talking about for the TAW. You know, we've got pooled cash for wastewater, and of course, redevelopment's off to the side. So this is everything else that's not in a separate bank account, as an example. You know, we've got certain funds that have their own separate bank accounts, but this is all the pooled funds that runs through Bank Seven is what it's called.
Okay. Okay, well, if you could have somebody send me the account numbers for that other fund line, $1,178...
Yeah, those don't change much. Yeah, those don't change much. Those are the small accounts that don't vary really much at all.
I'd still like to know which ones they are.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
And, and the sanitary, sanitary district bonds.
Yeah, those are easy.
And one of the things I'll, I'll take a look at with this is when do we need to borrow and when can we repay? But if the intent is to repay all we can on the Department of Redevelopment funds, then obviously any repayments wouldn't need to go on the PDA.
Right, and so.
Probably not till the second.
And I'm willing to work with the council on that, but the message was clear to me that we were going to try to reduce that redevelopment to free up money for them, even though they've got some funds, and now they bring even better shape because they got their disbursement. But if we cut that down by 3 million, that's going to pump a lot of money back in there.
Okay. And then, like I said, I yield.
Councilman Azar.
Getting back to Mr. Elliott's, Councilman Elliott's question. If you would reduce the redevelopment loan to three and the TAW to three, is that basically what you said a while ago, try to do them equal? I said that. Well, sorry. What, what do you save in interest on that? Well, just based, I know, I have my calculator.
You're going to save a little bit, but if we wait and don't approve this and interest rates go up, we probably aren't going to save anything, or it'll be minimal. I mean, I don't know, because I don't know what the interest rate's going to go up to. I think it's, you could sit and calculate it out and get something probably close to it, but, you know, I, I can't tell you exactly how much you're going to save or not by doing that, but you will save some money if you don't borrow a million dollars from the bank.
At 4.46%.
Or higher.
Or higher.
Right. If we only borrow three from them and the interest rate goes up, we maybe end up paying.
The same amount.
Might be cheaper to borrow from the bank and then deal with this next year. You know, do something different, a different model.
All right, I yield.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Special Ordinance 64, 2017, amending city council rules.
Petitioner?
Councilman Azar, did you want me to speak on this?
Yeah, for, I would be more than happy to. I'll have a look at the ordinance myself. There are a few changes in this.
They do have proposed amendment before them on that.
We do.
If I made a proposed amendment, it has some changes with regard to the pronouns that are used. Nothing substantive as far as the amendment goes.
I see it. Okay, for several, several years, there's, I felt like there's been some duplication and some unneeded steps in our meetings that have been a burden mainly on those, on the public. Not so much on us. We're here to do our job, and if it takes an extra hour, then it takes an extra hour. But there are some times when we have people sitting in the, in the public that have an ordinance that's, that they want, or a request that would take about three minutes' time, and we're sitting here discussing a budget that takes four hours. And those folks have to sit there for a four-hour discussion of a budget so they can get up and talk about their two-minute zoning. So what, and Michelle's been gracious enough to work on this. Basically, we wanted to be able to, one of the main things of this is, is of course changing from he, she, to councilperson, and also the order of the agenda. And to allow for that agenda to be changed so that we can accommodate those people that don't need to be here for three hours. And hopefully the council will, will agree with that. I'm not going to go through every little line because Michelle probably knows more than I do. I just felt like that it's, rather than a unanimous vote, which it would take, has taken to change the agenda, we do either a majority vote or allow the president to decide the order of the agenda. And because, for those that don't know, a unanimous vote means just that, unanimous. So if you have one councilperson that decides, nope, I don't want to have that done, I'm going to be a pain tonight, they can say no, and that stops it. So this way, it would either be by majority or by the president, and I just think that will make the meetings move a little smoother. This, this isn't the one about regular sunshine yet. That's the next one.
Okay. If I may.
Yeah, please.
Okay, so in Section C, the biggest change in that is when a petitioner or a citizen stands up and want to hand the council some printed materials, they need to bring a copy for the clerk. And then under I, we put in there that individuals can submit a request in writing to be notified of council meetings and the agendas. I do it anyway, but I'd just like to put it in the rules that they can do that. On the second page, under C, we did put in there that the council requests the specific line number for the account on all appropriations to be fully listed. And then under Section 5A, we, and Mr. Felling may be able to help, but we tried to clean up the titles. We've noticed over the last 15 years or so that there's been a little lax effort on using the titles. One of the things that we tried to do is figure out what takes the most time and what takes the least amount of time. There was no perfect order of the agenda. Currently, we do general ordinances, appropriations, special ordinances, and resolutions. We moved appropriations up and then generals and then specials and then resolutions. You can change that order around, but if you notice number 11 is tax abatements for confirmation. So once a tax abatement is adopted, at the next meeting, the confirmation, it would be at the top. Right above it would be items previously tabled. And then we would go into items on second reading, which is what we currently call old business now. And that would be anything that was from the prior month's meeting as items on first reading, which we currently call new business. So that is number 13. You can change the order if you'd rather have resolutions first and then appropriations. It was just hard to make a decision on what to put first. Below that, number C, Councilman Azar has already spoken about that, where either the council member and another council member can make a motion and then vote to change the order, or the president can make the change without any approval. And that's basically all of the changes other than the proposed amendment. Before you talk about councilperson rather than a council member or councilman.
Thank you.
Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak on Special Ordinance 64, 2017? Please state your name and address for the record.
Donald Hyde, 1411 Poplar Street. Based on my glean from Mr. Azar's request, I agree with it 100%. I think that we need to, we're right now in a political situation, not just here, but nationwide, where courtesy, minor things, don't seem to matter to people, or at least people think that. Anything that this council can do, the county can do, and that matter, the state of Indiana can do, to relieve that, to put back in the idea that we have some manners, that we have some stability. I think that would be good. I agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel?
Mr. President.
Councilman Nation.
This is one of three different pieces of legislation that we're considering to change the rules. All of this makes sense to me based on my experience on the city council. I yield.
Councilman Elliott.
President's Board. The last item on the first page, A, why is that majority of all members as opposed to majority of members present?
Good question. Michelle, do you want to answer that?
I believe you have to have five for a quorum. And between the statutes, and we have to go through a lot of statutes to check every area, but statutes and robust rules of order, it's the majority of the council. So I don't know. Can you add anything to that? I've never seen it listed where it's the majority of those present for the, for any council action. I've always seen it listed as the majority of the council. I could give you an example. There's something under 36-4, I don't remember the rest of it, about taking action at the first meeting, and it says the majority of the council, not the majority of the council present at the meeting.
Okay, well, I've seen lots of articles and bylaws in my business, and what I normally see is majority of members present.
Right, but going off of the statutes, I'm sorry, Mr. Felling.
If you meet the, if you meet the quorum, as long as you have the majority, that's the intent.
No, he, if, we find as the majority.
We're four out of seven is the majority.
Correct.
No.
But that, we're saying that, thanks. Five out of seven pass, and four out of nine.
He says the majority of those present would pass, not the majority of the council members. So we have nine members, five yeses have to pass. He's saying if there's five present, we would only need three.
You're talking about changing the order of the agenda. Is that what?
No, I'm just talking about.
No, and that's under Section 3A.
3A.
Section 3A.
I, I think that it's.
Statutes state that it's majority of the council.
Yeah.
Not the majority of the council present at the meeting. And I know specific references under 36-4 for taking action at the meeting. It talks about two-thirds of the council. Everywhere in the Indiana statutes under 36-4, I don't remember the rest of it, is always the majority of the council, two-thirds of the council. It's never references present.
So we all know that there's a hot issue and we aren't here.
It's, yeah.
We cast a no vote by not being here.
Because if we weren't the legislative body.
I think, ma'am, I, I believe the state, I mean, I think it does require that it has to be the majority of the council, not the majority of those present because you could have five people, a quorum. Well, but you have, have to have a quorum, well, no, a quorum would be, yeah. And if you, if you had five people here, then technically, three people could pass an ordinance if you do the majority of those present.
There should be some incentive to be here.
Well, I, I think it's called, I swear you got elected, but, but, I mean, I, I see your point. I just, I think that that's part of the state statute, maybe, I mean, you guys know more about it than I do.
I'll run off through the statute, but I believe this, I know it's felt, so I'll do that.
Okay.
If that's a requirement, then it's a requirement.
Yeah, I think it is.
Makes it easy.
I think it is.
Thank you. Do we get, in Section 6, it's on the third page. I've never seen us get very serious about who speaks how many times and who's counting and what, how, how the word speech is defined and so on and so forth. So should I not really worry about that too much because we do what we do the way we do it regardless of what this says?
Councilman Crossen.
Well, just to say real that that's already in this, in our rules, so it's not a change. But I suspect that came into, not this necessarily, this council per se, but in some kind of boilerplate for councils because there were councils upon which behavior was not restrained and not cordial. And just kind of, we could ask for that if it gets to that point. I certainly haven't experienced, experienced any problems with this council, but. I yield.
Thank you.
Councilman, Gibson.
I think I'm instinctual, heated issues. Usually, I think in the past, we've seen where everybody tries to talk once, or, you know, the president will say, let's let everybody talk once before we go back and start duplicating. I've seen that a few times, but usually on the heated things. So I just one comment on that. This issue, we talked about if we were going to move appropriations or resolutions up. Is it either or, either the president can do it or a vote by the council? Should we pick one or the other? I'm just wondering, rather than having two options.
If, I mean, if I had my choice, I think the president should be allowed to.
I like that, too.
I do, too.
I agree.
So maybe we could just pick one.
So the council, it's okay to remove or by the council? Okay, legal, we'll work on that. I'm speaking for them.
Okay, that might protect us a little bit in the future.
As long as we're allowed to prompt you. We have a feeling about something.
Sure, we can ask him to do it.
Well, it's usually, I think it's fair, and we, you know, we change president every year, so everybody gets a chance to kind of go through that. But I, I like, I like what's crafted here, so I, good job, Councilman Azar and Michelle and Eddie for putting this together. And I, and I know this group especially has been pretty good at making sure we don't penalize the public. You know, we're going to be careful, I think, when, that we're not voting on something the first day, and the public's going to show up the second week and create a problem, so. Good job, everyone.
I yield.
All right, next item, please.
Special Ordinance 65, 2017, amending city council rules. Councilman Elliott, Elliott, would you like me to speak on this one?
Where?
Oh, joy. Okay, hang on a second. Okay, Special Ordinance 65 is the big change. So if you're okay, I'd like to start at the top and just go down. I'll summarize quickly. There's two major changes in here. One is to eliminate the sunshine meeting. And I would like to point out that the statutes do not reference a sunshine meeting. So it's just something that we created locally. So it would eliminate the sunshine meeting and create two, two regular meetings per month. Action could be taken at either meeting, amendments could happen, public comment on non-agenda items could happen, reports from governmental officials. Everything I currently do at a regular meeting now would be able, would be allowed at either of those meetings. This would also create two filing deadlines. At first, this sounds very confusing, but actually, it will help me in the long run in the clerk's office because when someone misses one deadline, there's another deadline coming up that they could meet. So items filed by the first deadline will be on the first regular agenda of the month. Items filed by the second deadline will be at the second meeting of the month. The other thing would be, the biggest one, is that by statute, the council can take a motion to take action on an item at the first meeting. They're not required to. It is an option. This has been a long-winded discussion with a lot of people. So I'm going to make up a really crazy resolution, a resolution to transfer, you know, $5,000 into a legal department fee for legal pads. So he wants $5,000 in there. You have no questions. You could actually vote on that at that same meeting instead of having people attend two meetings. You're no longer going to have what we consider new business now. So an item that's filed is going to go under items on first reading. The petitioner will be here, the public can comment on it, the public can speak on it. Advertising would already be done. If the council felt that it was something that they had no additional questions, the public had had their chance to speak, it was, I don't want to use the term easy, but something that didn't need an extra discussion at another meeting, they could take a motion to take action at that meeting and then vote to pass it. But I want to stress, it's the word option. It is not required. If you take no action the first meeting, then it just automatically goes to the next meeting. Anything you want to interject yet? Because I'm running out of voice.
Most importantly, and I, any of you council members that have ever requested that specifically my department put something together know how frustrating it can be on timing as far as how quickly we can get the ball moving. as how quickly we can get the ball moving. This will not speed it up incredibly, but can save at least two weeks, essentially, if not more. What it also does, and again, just to reiterate what Michelle said, anyway, there's a lot of items this council has that are really no contest issues, again, we can get those through and get those through quickly. But, items will, by default, I believe, the way it's written, go through to a second reading automatically. So, there'd have to be some act, they wouldn't automatically be a vote the first time around. So, everything will still go twice unless it's something we want to push forward more quickly.
And to carry on with that, just a couple of items. Now, you have an item introduced in January for action in February, so we're looking at four weeks. They filed it two weeks prior to the January meeting date, so now we're at six weeks. With this change, they would actually be able to, what do we determine, about two weeks?
Two and a half, I think.
Two and a half weeks to be shaved off that deadline. You're still going to have it for three weeks. You're still going to have access to it for three weeks. You're still going to be able to read it, to contact the petitioner, to ask questions. And if you, if the council does not take an action to vote on acting on it that night, then it's just going to carry over to the next week. The next week, you can table it till the next month. There's no requirement. Now, special ordinances for rezonings, they would have to go another month, because they have to go to area planning. There is no question on that. Forgive me for bringing this up, rate increases, have to have public hearings, have to have special additional meetings, so you couldn't fast-track it. And it's in the council's hands. You think there's more discussion, you have more questions, you have more concerns, then you take no action. But the two regular meetings, there's two filing deadlines that gives petitioners for rezonings, and I'll pick on Mr. Shagley since he's here, they were unable to finalize a deed by the regular first filing deadline, now they have a second one, and they could still get it done in a timely manner. Right now, if they miss it, they're going to go an additional month. So, they would have filed it in January for action in February, if they missed the filing deadline as we are now, they're looking at March. So, this would allow his clients that's trying to sell a property, or his clients who's trying to purchase a property, the ability to still have action in about four to five weeks. There's a lot of areas in here on this one, because we had to change the filing deadlines, because there will be two filing deadlines. And then I will let Councilman Elliott speak on the ballot voting, which is under, I believe, third page, second page? Oh, yes, Q. Any vote by ballot shall be made on the paper ballot provided by the city clerk. There has been, I feel like there's been a lot of misconception on this, this isn't a secret ballot. There would be an actual paper handed to each council member that would have to be retained. They would, I would read it on how each council member voted. So, basically, it's a roll call vote that you write down. The record would reflect how each council member voted, this is not going to be a secret ballot that's put into a box that you would have no idea who voted which way. The ballots would have to be retained by the clerk's office and placed on the website as well. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Elliott for his comments on the ballot voting.
To me, it's, it's pretty simple. I think the use of paper ballots requires all members to vote without knowledge of how any other council member has voted. This method, I think, is above reproach and removes any concern about vote counting by the last few members to vote.
Have you finished petitioning? Is it, I want to get...
I'm sorry?
I want to see if anyone from the public would like to speak on this before council discussion. Would anybody from the public like to speak on special order sixty-five, twenty-seventeen?
Good evening, thank you, Lisa Spence, two twenty Barton Avenue, Terre Haute. I'm here this evening as a representative of the Taxpayers Association of Vigo County. Forgive me, I'll start with a couple of background statements, just to convey our understanding of the current process. In today's process, the sunshine meeting proceeds to the council meeting where a vote is taken. Obviously, as the name of this session implies, this offers an opportunity for the public to attend the sunshine meeting, to hear about and understand a particular proposal before it is voted on, with time to analyze or research that issue, and/or to communicate to council members about that issue prior to the issue being voted upon. We understand the desire for greater efficiency and the proposed change related to eliminating the sunshine meetings, but this proposal seems to work against the environment we have in Terre Haute right now, wherein, first, members of the public are asking for increased and improved transparency from their city and county governments, and, second, members of the public are demonstrating an increased interest in the operations and decisions of government, and are demonstrating an increased participation in events such as city and county council meetings. Our conclusion at this time is that, based on what we know right now about the proposed change, the Taxpayers Association of Vigo County is not in favor of this change. We are certainly not in favor of its being voted on without the opportunity for more public discussion and explanation of the process. That being said, I have a couple of questions that I would like to ask. Can I do that?
Yeah, you can do that.
First question is, how is the public to understand that issues are being brought for the city council in order to plan to attend a meeting where each issue may be presented and also voted on at that same meeting? Often, agenda items are short and not descriptive of the full topic.
If you would go ahead and ask your questions now, we'll answer those through the schedule.
Okay, all right. The second question is, how far in advance will agendas be published so that the public can understand which topics are going to be discussed in each meeting? Oftentimes today, agendas are published with very little lead time in advance of a meeting. The third and final question on this topic, and I got one question on the balloting, so I'll hold that if that's okay. The third question on the sunshine meeting topic is, how will it be decided what issues will be voted on the first time? Well, let me back up. Aside from the exceptions that were noted, such as for things like rate increases, how will it be decided what issues will be voted on the first time they are brought to the table, and which will come for a second hearing, with the opportunity for the public to ask questions, perform research, and give input to council members in between sessions? Those are the three questions related to the sunshine meeting elimination.
Thank you very much. Is there, I'm sorry. Yeah, Michelle, if you would, please.
I apologize. I think there's a little misconception. I get a lot of calls, a lot of emails, is the agenda ready, is the agenda ready? We're not like other organizations. We don't slide anything on the agenda at the last moment. I've tried to explain to people over the years, and I hope, like our new council members, if it was new business in December, it's old business in January. Everything's put on the website as promptly as I can get it. We explained how administration, the city administration petitioners, outside petitioners will ask us to file something at the last moment, and so I have a timeline, I'm sorry, I have a delay in posting that on the website. I have tried my best to have things on the website at least two weeks before the sunshine meeting. I try and get a draft agenda up there on the sunshine meeting at least a week ahead, but the ordinances for full viewing are up there at least a week, if not two weeks, before the sunshine meeting. Who will decide what action is taken? The council. The council makes the decision on everything. The council has the option, and I can't stress that word enough, the option, if they wanted to take action that same night, that they could, but they have to unanimously vote to approve that. And if they unanimously vote to approve taking action that night, there has to be six yes votes, this is a special circumstance, in the Indiana statutes. There would have to be six yes votes to approve it, not five. So, they could get eight yes votes to take action that night and one no vote, there's no action. This is an option that I noticed quite a few other, over my last couple of years, I've been researching other councils, and I was shocked, because they were passing things the same night. How are you doing this? I said, why aren't you introducing it this month? And they said, no, we've already advertised it. I said, how are you advertising it? And they said, you don't have to read it into record. I said, but our council rule says that we have to read it into record. Long story short, talking to all these different councils, we were taking twice as long for a petitioner to have any discussion or any action as other councils were. Majority of the councils that I contacted, and again, I apologize, I didn't keep my research from a couple of years ago, are holding one meeting a month, one meeting a month. Occasionally, they would meet for committee, but they would hold one meeting a month. And they said, well, what do you do at your sunshine meeting? And I said, well, the council has a discussion, you don't take action. I said, no, we have to wait one more week. It is to, everyone's benefit, if I could interject my opinion, everyone's benefit to allow two regular meetings, because if you need to amend something, and I believe Councilman Nation and Councilman Garrison will definitely remember, and Councilman Azar, then you're told you have to re-advertise it. And then we're waiting another month, and we're having a special call, because you have to advertise it and then, I'm sorry, you have to amend it and then re-advertise it. That may not seem super significant, but if it is, for example, a petitioner wanting to rezone a parcel, and they're trying to sell it, I think the general public is focusing on the fact that this could be fast-tracking appropriations or other fiscal matters, whereas the majority of this, we're looking at it from the point of a petitioner wanting to rezone a property. It will be on the website. Items are on the website at least two weeks before the sunshine meeting now. The plan is to have them three to three and a half weeks before the first regular meeting. So, the public can access the website at any time, they can contact the clerk's office, they can email the clerk's office, and I send them links all the time to this. The council members will have access to the documents. Anyone who contacts the clerk's office and asks to be placed on the distribution for meetings for links, I add them on there. But I'll go back to my very first statement, there's a lot of confusion with the public that they think the agenda means the meeting is ready. There's a filing deadline for everything before that. So, it's put on the website, the agenda tells us what they can vote on. So, while the agenda may be sent out, the items are on the website at least a couple weeks prior to that.
May I respond?
Yes, you may.
Given the fact that you've stated several times that there's a lot of confusion, may I ask, or may I submit to you all, that perhaps some clarification of schedules for these things, perhaps either put on your website or posted in the newspaper would be helpful before this comes up again? I've heard you, I heard you mention things like, I put things on the website as promptly as I can get it, but there are last minute requests. It seems like there's not, I'm not hearing, I'm hearing a little bit of, things get out there when they, not when they can, but within a certain period of time, there is a deadline, but then things just appear.
There's no legal requirement for posting on the website. We do that as a courtesy to individuals, and the last minute requirements, we always make sure our legal advertisements are handled in the proper manner. An ordinance, and I'm going to have the city attorney respond to this, an ordinance does not exist for new business until it's read into record.
Correct.
So, creating one, if we don't change the rules and February comes around, February's ordinances that are filed are not official until they're read as new business in January. So, I usually get those on the website within two or three days. There's a holiday after the regular meeting, Monday, we're closed. I do usually work, I think the council can respond to that. But that's why I'm trying to be flexible, is I try and get it up there as quickly as possible, but if we're closed any time around that, you know, and I have explained, anyone who's contacted me, I have explained multiple times on how it works. I do get the occasional phone call, to this day, that people still think, they just call the council and put me on the agenda. And they don't understand that just because you want to speak about sewer rates, you're put on the agenda. I'll be gone.
I'll just state my opinion about what I'm hearing. My opinion is that I think this discussion somewhat confirms the concerns that I'm bringing to light, which is that many of your processes, which you all are familiar with, and you all may work with every day or every week, are not familiar to the public. So, I would ask for additional clarifying schedules and information that apparently are not available or not widely viewed, that might help the public to understand what these processes are going to look like, what some of these deadlines are, and how we will have to interact if we can't just show up at a council meeting and hear about something, and then have a week to react to it. So, I'm hearing that there, perhaps there's a need for additional clarification of how these different steps will work before the courtesy, or really, the duty to the public is fulfilled if you're going to make this change. That's my opinion.
Councilman Nasser, you wish to respond?
Yeah, Ms. Spence, I appreciate you coming and addressing your concerns, and, you know, we have a sister government, the county, that, you know, they have, do their meetings a certain way, commissioners do their meetings a certain way, but I think I would take this council's approach to transparency and efficiency and put that up against anybody. In fact, I've had new leadership with the county council meet with me and ask us how we go about doing our meetings. One of the big changes they've made is that they've made their meetings go from 5:00 p.m. until 6:00 p.m., to allow more engagement, allow more public comments. So, I think we do a very good job. We have our meetings on YouTube, where people can watch our meetings on YouTube, if people have Time Warner Cable, they can watch our meetings on Time Warner Cable. All our meetings are audio recorded, they can do them online. All of our ordinances are PDF files, where people can look at them online, that's more than I can say that the council, county council can say for themselves. So, I appreciate your comments, and, you know, we're not perfect when it comes to government, no government is perfect. I mean, we've had our democracies for, you know, over two hundred years, and we're still trying to figure it out, but I would take our approach to transparency on this council and put up against anybody.
I don't disagree with that, to respond to that. I'm asking for you all to ensure, if you're going to make this change, that the process for submitting items and publicizing what's going to be covered is as complete and as well-understood, can be made available and be as understandable to people as possible, so that we can all know, that we can go out and look at the website X period of time before a council meeting, and have a clear and complete, as complete as possible, explanation of an item that's going, what items are going to be addressed, so that we can decide whether we are going to come and speak or not, in case you decide to, in a certain particular meeting, discuss and then act on a particular item. That's just... That's just, that's simply the point I'm making.
Okay. Councilman Crossen.
I go. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Ms. Spence, I also want to thank you for coming tonight. I very much appreciate your concerns about transparency. I would say that we're in a position to try to balance that overall transparency with other public needs, for us to move a little more quickly on some things. And so I think we're trying to find a balance here. I don't think you will find that there is any less available to the public under this new proposed system than there is now. For me, one of the, one of the protections is that to vote, or to vote in the first meeting, if something comes up, we would have to have a unanimous vote of this council. And I can say for one, that if I have a sense that there are people in our audience that are wanting to have another opportunity to examine this and have made their concern about that clear, I would side with those citizens to give them that time to do that. And I think there are others on this council, if not all of us, who would, who would, in many cases, if not all, support that kind of additional time, because we would, at that point, only be talking about a week. But for those items, and they do come up with some regularity, where it is a matter of efficiency, it would also give us the ability to move forward on that. And I, I for one feel like that there's some protections in place for that, and would like to give this a try. If we find out it isn't working to, after a year, it isn't working to the benefit of the public and the government, then I think we can always make other amendments on the council rules. But that's kind of how, you know, I'm reading this, and I don't know if that's helpful to you, but that's how I'm reading it. I go.
Thank you. May I ask my final question, which had to do with the balloting process?
Your question.
How will the choice be made as to which process will be used for voting, the ballot or a voice vote?
I'm sorry, ballot or?
Or a voice vote.
Michelle?
I was just going to say, it's standard voice vote. A council member has to request currently roll call vote. If the proposed amendment takes place, then it would be a ballot vote.
In all cases?
The, a council member would have to request it. It's a voice vote, meaning all those in favor say aye, all those against, that's automatic.
Right.
A council member would have to request a ballot voting.
Okay. Okay.
Councilman Crossen?
And I just might add to what Michelle said, clearly said it wasn't obvious, is that even currently, we have to do that. If we want a roll call vote, an individual vote by individual council people, we have to do that. This would just be a difference in how we do that.
How you do that.
Correct.
Councilman Azar?
There is one difference. On a ballot vote, you have to have a majority of the council approve a ballot vote. If you call for a ballot vote, the majority has to approve it.
Not in our amendment?
Not in our amendment, by Robert's rules.
Well, we can establish a rule.
You don't have to go by Robert's?
The rules of Robert's rules is to be a guideline in the absence of a law.
Okay, so we don't have to go by that specific?
I'm not aware of that. But generally, Robert's rule is to score the absence of other rules.
Okay.
If I may, I believe our council rules, and I don't know where they've been, the originals, but I believe it states that if there is nothing listed, reference in our council rules, we do go by Robert's rules of order.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
I go. Councilwoman Ollie?
Okay, first of all, thanks for your concerns. And with that being said, first of all, I also want to thank, I know the, Michelle's office, they hustle and try to get everything out through the media, through the website and everything else. But I don't have a problem if, and this is just a suggestion, we want to amend the rule that whatever, you know, ordinance, resolution, whatever's been filed, goes on the website, and we have to have it on the website within like two or three days. That way, we have a deadline of, hey, when something's filed, you only have this many days to have it on the, on the website.
I'm fine with that, as long as everybody understands holidays would extend that.
Business days. Business days. Two to three business days.
I go. Councilman Nation?
Amy, that's a great suggestion. I've just got two things. One of your, first, I guess I should preface this by saying, change is hard, and I, for me especially, I hope to say. And I greeted this effort with some skepticism. But after listening and understanding, and reading everything, and trying to understand how it all fits together, I think it'll be on balance better for us. And one way that it'll be better for the public is that there's confusion, and we saw this confusion a couple of times in 2017, around when the public could speak on non-agenda items. Our city attorney made the determination that new business, as we treat it now, is not, oh, wait, is an agenda item. And in so doing, made, changed a, well, in so doing, we had members of the public come who were confused about whether or not they could talk about proposed rate increases, other things that were showing up as new business, and they were sent away, told that they could not address this council. Under this proposed set of rules, everything is something that anybody can talk about anytime. So in my mind, that helps increase transparency and increase access, and increase the public's access to the council and input, ability to input to council. I'm not saying that I think that what is being proposed is all great, but I do think that that part of it does help. One question I have is, would the two meetings a month still be on the first and second Thursday of the month, or would we switch to the first and third Thursday of the month?
Excuse me. After speaking with quite a few council members for 2018, a lot of discussion was to keep it the first and the second, and allow everyone to make decisions for 2019, because you may have plans, you may have seminars that you have to attend, work obligations, and then 2019, everybody could decide if they want to move it to first and third, or keep it at first and second.
Or go to second and fourth, or whatever.
Or second and fourth.
I do want to split it up and even it out, so that this really does work better for the public in terms of moving things through the snake faster.
And it also gives the council a chance to, if they decide to pass this, to go through two or three months of meetings. You know, would it be better to be second and fourth? Would it be better to be first and third?
Okay. Thanks, I hadn't had a chance to ask that question privately, so here I am, asking it publicly. The other thing that I wanted to mention is, there's a Scrivener's error in here, it's on the last page, under section four, C, and the way it reads, you just need to strike through the word "call" at the end of C. And if you read it to yourself, you'll see why it needs to be struck through. Now, the way it reads is, "The presiding officer shall decide whether any questions carried by affirmative or negative votes, but if he or she is in doubt, or if a division of the assembly is called for by one member, the city clerk or the deputy shall call before voting." No, wait, shall call distribute ballots for voting. And just the word "call" needs to be struck through, so that finishes, "or deputies shall distribute ballots for voting." Right?
We will add it to the other amendment, if that affects.
Yeah, please. Okay, I go, thanks.
Councilman Garrison?
Just for clarification, for me, and maybe for the public and for Lisa, and maybe other members of the council, can we just go through a scenario on how this would actually work? Let's say that we pass this, this month, and it goes into play next month, which our new president's sure going to love. But, okay, let's say it's an issue. I'll pick one that we rarely have anybody from the public speak. Usually every year, the police department does something like an operation pullover, and they, I think they're paid, or over time, it's paid out general fund. Later, the state repays their money, they come in for appropriation, and we move money from one account to another. I don't think I've ever heard anybody speak about that. So that, that might be one that would apply here. So let's say the chief comes and addresses that. Then the president says, anyone from the public have any comment? Usually none on that one. Then we turn inward, anyone from the city council have any comment on that? Maybe there is, maybe there isn't. At sunshine meeting, we would just go into next business, the next order of business. So what would be the phrase that the president would say at that time? Or if I want to go ahead and make some sort of a motion to, to take action on that, how would that, how would that play out?
May I speak about filing deadlines? I think that was part of your question, too.
Filing, not filing deadlines.
Well, if I may, just have a little leeway.
Sure.
I think it will help. See, so I pulled my calendar up. Let's just say March 1st is our first regular meeting in March. That appropriation that you're referring to would need to be filed by February 9th. So that means it would be in the newspaper the week, not the 12th, but the week of the 12th, and on the website, the week of February 12th. Which gives you two and a half, three weeks beforehand. It's available for you, it's available for the public. So then the March 1st meeting comes, and as you said, petitioner, everybody speaks, you as a council member could say, and I'm not sure if Mr. Felling has reviewed any language, but that you wish to take action on appropriation one, 2018, at tonight's meeting. Councilman Azar seconded it. And then there's a vote. If it's not unanimous, it does not get considered.
Okay, so we take that vote unanimously approved.
Then you take the other vote.
And then you take the next vote.
And then you say, I make a motion to approve, pass appropriation one, 2018.
And then?
And if we're going to even take action, we just move on?
It goes to the next.
Right. And so the president might say something like, seeing no action for tonight, what's the next order of business?
And I assume, if this had a possibility of passing at all, our first two meetings, our first two months, I'm sorry, of meetings, we should have a statement. You know, due to the change of the council meetings, we are just stating that this is going to be on next week's agenda. And just to help clarify, for all of us, for me, for you guys.
Okay. Does that help everybody?
Yeah.
Now, the bad question. Let's say that we vote on something the first week, when Lisa shows up the second week, wants to talk about that, we say we've already voted on it, it's already passed, Lisa says, I didn't know about that, can we change it? We can't change it, right?
Can't change your vote.
Can't revote, can't?
Just to back up, the legal notices will state, and the legal department's going to help me on this. Normally, it says on appropriations, notices hereby given that the following will be heard at Terre Haute City Council, voila, meeting. We're going to have to add language, and if no action is taken, will be heard at the second meeting date. I would, to add on there, more information may be found at www.terrehaute.in.gov/citycouncil. It will be on the website, there will be a disclaimer. Action may be taken at this meeting. If no action is taken, it will be heard at this meeting. So I, I see how there can be major confusion, and I want to put as much information out there as possible. I think we also should add that to the agendas.
Okay. Lisa, do you, how do you get your information before you come to a meeting?
Many times, I see something in the newspaper. That has happened, and then I know I better show up at the next.
Do you know if your members go to the website much, or?
I think this would say to me that we need to do that. That's why I'm looking for the kind of schedule where I know, I mean, now, what I would say is, you know, something comes up, I read it in the paper, I show up at the next, I've got one place to come and have this discussion. If I know as a citizen, I need to go and check the website on a particular schedule, and I'll see everything that I need to see, it'll be explained to me, you know, something more than, forgive me, I'm going to use it, whatever the examples are today, ordinance number, blah, 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 right, property transfer. You know, it's got to say more than that. If I know I need to do that, then I'll make sure that I know I need to do that. And two weeks before, I'm checking the website to see what's coming up, see if there's anything of interest. I've got one place to go, maybe it shows up in the paper, or maybe it doesn't, but if I'm really paying attention, I've got that one place, on that one schedule, then I'm good to go. I know I'm ready to see whether I need to come to the next meeting or not. I think that's, I don't think that's unfair.
Councilman Garrison, can I just confirm your email address?
I was going to say, I want you to tell her your email address.
Well, the only reason I'm asking is because I believe your tax topics, I mean, your Taxpayers Association, right? Because you should, you're already on the just abuse list.
I don't believe she's president.
I'm, yeah, right.
Okay. Well, someone was, because someone answered the phone when we called about the special meeting.
Well, and?
Okay. Okay. Because I was like, and I sent the email. Okay. I just, if you can, confirm with me.
Okay. And, and, and in that vein, I'm really talking about, really representing just random citizens, right? We just, we're not, we don't do this job every day. We may not, so we need a little help. And that's, that's what I'm asked. Please be clear. Please, before you do this, give us a good example. I love your, let's go through an example, which you helped with, you know, it'd be posted by this date, you'd have to look here, see this, and then it, it would happen this way in the actual council meeting. I think that'd be very helpful to have posted on the website before you guys do the final vote on this.
I think we've been pretty lucky here lately. Dave Taylor's here with the Tribune, he does a good job of looking at what's coming and teasing the big stories. Those probably wouldn't be voted on the first night. And I think, just, I like it. But I think the first month, two months, three months, we really would have to ease into this. And, you know, the more these videos are out for people to see, the better. I go, thanks.
Councilman Nasser?
And I just want to remind people that may or may not know, when it comes to the county, you know, they're the fiscal body of the county government, whereas the city council, we are the fiscal and the legislative body as well. So we sometimes have more items on our agenda than what the county would be. So this is just going to help make it more efficient.
Amy?
Let me just say, to go back to something you said earlier, Councilman Nasser, just the fact that I can stand up here, ask some questions, and have this whole interaction with you guys is much appreciated. I like the way you guys do business. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spence. Anybody else from the public want to speak on special ordinance 64, 2017? Name and address for the record, please.
My name's Donald Hyde. I live at 1411 Poplar Street. Yeah, she asked a lot of questions, had me thinking, but I'm going to get back to my main thing I was going to talk about, because this is the main reason I came to this meeting. We are now in 2018, whether you like it or not, whether anybody in this city or this county likes it or not. I've lived here all my life, and I'm telling you right now that we are in a year, and the one coming in 2020, I can think of no time in my life where more importance is not going to be paid to public comment, and for the politicians to be leaders. The events that we're going to have to discuss in the next two years will cost nearly a half a billion dollars. Fact, not fiction, not me overestimating, sir, and not me underestimating. That would be the cheapest end of it. The public, when they spend that kind of money, they have a right to know what they're getting, how the decisions were made, and are the people doing the work going to actually be able to do the work? Now, I'm not going to bore you with, again, telling you what those things are. I assume that 10 of you and the mayor, who left, by the way, all, they know it. It's been in newspapers. But I do the basic math, and I'm not a genius like this one guy is with math, but even I can understand that when you add it all up, it will take a good 10 to 15 years to pay it off. And when you've cost that much taxpayer money, now? cost that much taxpayer money, no matter how much we're put into it, everybody is affected by it. And by the way, it's not, you're right, it's not just the city. The county's gonna be paying part of this budget. But the same token, the city needs to make sure they get their part in, so that we can manage this and come away with getting something for our money and our time that betters the city of Terre Haute, because we can, we will be in a position to do great things. We also in a position to have bad mistakes hit us. And that's where the leadership comes in, from the council. And you guys, as far as I'm concerned with what you're suggesting, is going down the right road. You need more of the public to take interest in these things and voice their opinions, whether you agree with it or not. Because the more we know, the better you can make the right decisions and hold the costs down. And more important than you hold the costs down, I, I don't care about that. I really don't. I care that when we spend the money, we get what we, what we want for that money. We get our value out of that money. And I'm sorry, lately, there's the opinion of me and probably most of the people in this city and county, we're not getting it. You wanna turn that around, you turn that around by being more open, by me more clear to the public what's going on and why it's going on. I think you're going down the right way by having two meetings where people from the public can ask questions and make statements. I think that is the number one thing you need to keep for what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Oller.
With, with one of his statements of, of us being clear, I think this council as a whole, we do very, try to do our best at being clear. Um, I know one of the council members stated, we're on YouTube, we're on Time Warner. Uh, the video is on the city website, audio and video. I believe video is on the site, too. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Audio is on the website, YouTube, but video is on the...
Okay. Um, so I just, as a council person on this council, I take pride in that, that at any point in time, if somebody wasn't at a meeting or wasn't here, they have access to see what happened at that meeting, see how the vote went at that meeting. And I think we couldn't be any more open than that, trying to get it out there. And with us going to these two meetings and both of them being regular meetings, that leaves 30 minutes each meeting for anybody to get up and talk about anything that's not on that agenda. So instead of just having a one 30-minute session for the public, now we're giving them two sessions to be here and to be able to talk. So I think that's pretty open, too. Ayeo.
And I, and I would like to, to reiterate that we are, we are very open because there are, there is no statute or rule that requires us to even have a sunshine meeting. So we technically could have, all these years, had one meeting, uh, a month and voted then. And we chose as a council to continue with two meetings. Um, we, we are not eliminating a meeting, we're just making that second meeting, or that first meeting, a voting meeting. So I don't think we've done anything that's really any different, other than hopefully not have to have Mr. Shagley come back, uh, two times, because I really get tired of listening to him. So I just, I'm just teasing it.
Is there any further, uh, anyone from the public who would like to speak on this?
No, I feel like I have to, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. President, Richard Shagley, um, you know, as someone who attended about as many meetings, everybody at the table last year, um, and with the exception of one or two of the rezonings, you know, they, it would've been nice to just knock it out in one meeting. So, and I applaud that. I also applaud Michelle and her office. I did, I think they do a phenomenal job. As far as the other in our county, I, I think she sets the bar of transparency, as well as your council, uh, the TV, I, I love that. I was talking to a county council member today, throwing the idea of, I would love if, love is probably about the right, I would, I would appreciate, and I think the, the community would appreciate, the transparency if all government meetings took place in this room, since it's already set up to be televised. Um, cause I'm amazed by the amount of people that say, oh, I saw you, you know, I was watching that. I was amazed by the amount of people that watched that public access channel. I mean, it's crazy. Um, so that being said, hi Brad. Brad, my partner always teases me because he sees me at the, as he's walking on, no, no, treadmill at the workout place, but, um, I like the idea of the efficiency. You know, you don't want your government to be a speedboat. You want to be a, a tanker out in the sea, not be able to move fast. And although this is a movement, I don't think it's a drastic move. And it does allow for the contentious issues to have that second meeting, if would be. Uh, cause I, when I first saw the notice from Michelle and I read the ordinances that were easily, uh, available, I started thinking about it and how it would affect, uh, what I do in the, the community. Um, and I think this is a, and I've gone back and forth, I've gone back and forth a few times just when I was sitting there, because I know, well, you need it, but, you know, this is a perfect example, maybe you do, because now we can go back and think about it for a week. We can take some phone calls, some emails and make a decision. But same time, you know, of the issues that you vote on each month, how many could you, could you have knocked out at the first meeting and then save more time, uh, for the next meeting? So, um, and I also like the idea of build a, to, if council willing, move up a, a rezoning before a four-hour discussion on a fee, um, although I... Sure your clients would like it, too. I know my clients would like it. Uh, and appreciate it. Um, no doubt about that. Save me some phone calls. Um, so I applaud you in, in moving in this direction. Again, I applaud Michelle and, and your, um, willingness to allow for this transparency. Um, and I think this is definitely a move in the right direction. Um, and I, I do also, as far as the voting goes, I, I had some skepticism when I first saw about the paper ballots. After the clarification of, it would be a public record, it would be a FOIA, you're gonna read that who votes what, you're gonna be able to see it. So there's no secret, there's no, it's gonna be transparent. It also takes some of the pressure off the As of the world.
Amen.
So, um, of course now, uh, and it helps the president now that he's, uh, uh, or I guess it hurts the president now, uh, whoever the president may be. But, uh, I applaud you in moving this direction and, um, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. President, just one quick clarification. Um, Mr. Shagley, I hate to tell you, uh, rezonings still have to go to area planning.
Oh, yeah, that's...
So you're still waiting a month.
Well, but it's, but, you know, last year I was here, uh, 11 of the 12 months, uh, and only two of them, um, I had a neighbor, I had a neighbor show up.
Yeah.
So I think, um, and, and that's a night, the, the rezoning system, going through area plan's great, because it gives, when you're doing property, it's good to give people the opportunity of due process. I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm in favor of that a hundred percent. Um, but, you know, ninety percent of the time last year, uh, I could have been, uh, my, and the petitioners could have been resolved in, in, uh, in one meeting. So that ability is nice. So, but thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Oller.
And just to touch on the ballot, since I am the A in first, I think either going with the ballot, you know, is, is good and/or if we start the alphabet, if we have roll call, do the top of the alphabet, the first roll call, next month we have a roll call, start from the bottom of the alphabet. Either way, it just, I think it makes it fair to everyone, because I know there's been times where we've all been, you know, back and forth on something and the start of the list, and then you have people that count the votes and I just, I like the idea of the ballot. Ayeo.
Uh, Councilman Garrison, just on the ballot, I wanna talk about that, too, just for a second. I, I think it's a good idea, too. And, and for me, yeah, I do feel for those that have, you know, initials A, B, and C. But I think the more important part is, let's say, for example, my name is Zimmerman, I'm Z and I'm voting probably not last, because president votes last, just in case the public's not aware of that. Um, and let's say there's a contentious vote, for example. Let's say there's a group here tonight who wants a rate. And they need five votes one way or the other, and the first five votes are no. The last two votes say it's me, Zimmerman, I vote yes. And I've, I've seen it happen. We, a few of us have seen that happen. At the end of the meeting, they go to the group and say, I did everything I could for you, I was for your raise all the way, knowing that the, the, the ordinance has already been voted down. So I think this eliminates that, or a lot of that, that risk. So I think this would be a help. Ayeo.
Councilman Elliott.
Here's what I remember about this issue from the last year. Uh, every now and then, uh, President Nasser would go, roll call vote, Michelle, please. I don't recall anybody else never asking for, for a roll call vote. I don't know what the process is, what the process was for calling for a roll call vote. What I've heard this evening is, any council member can request a ballot vote. But, but I'm not sure I see that in here. For any, any, uh, council member who would request a ballot vote.
At the last sentence, oh.
Eddie, do you wanna clarify that?
If it's in there, I don't know where, somebody needs to tell them where it is. Cause I had that same question, uh, that Lisa had, Lisa asked it before.
I think, I think it's the last sentence.
Q, the division of the assembly may be requested by any member of the council and
does not require a second or a vote.
It's where?
The last sentence of Q, at the bottom of page two.
But not required, right.
Maybe you don't have the amendment. It, it just says, the division of the assembly may be requested by any member of the council and does not require a second or a vote.
What's division of the assembly?
That means you're asking for a division of the vote, a single vote as opposed to As in the names.
Okay. Well, I just didn't know that's what that meant, then.
Yeah.
Thank you. Ayeo.
Councilman Nasser.
Well, since I have one of the letters that comes towards the end of the alphabet, I wanna take this moment to kinda defend myself. Every vote that I've made, uh, last year was a, a vote that I would say if my name was in A, B, C, D, all the way to Z. Um, I make my votes based on what my constituents, constituents, uh, ask of me. Um, I don't care how we vote in the future, if we wanna rotate it, if we wanna do a secret ballot. Um, I, I just wanna make that clear, that that's, that's how I vote on things. Um, the only thing I would ask that if we did something maybe with the, uh, paper ballot, is maybe at the end, do a thing where maybe we say, is this how everybody votes? So it can be one more confirmation of how we do it. But again, I don't, I don't care how we do it in the future. I just wanna make sure that we are transparent and let the, uh, people know how we're gonna vote. Ayeo.
It says it in there. It's my understanding, it's only a temporarily secret ballot, because they will be read.
Okay.
Which...
Okay. And, well, and then I, I think maybe at the end, I'm not saying Michelle's not gonna read it correctly, but maybe we can do an affirmation of how we, we voted. Just something like that.
Prior to the president actually announcing the outcome of the vote, any member can always change their vote.
Okay. All right. Ayeo.
Mr. Chairman. And I think we need to clarify, it's not a secret ballot, it's a paper ballot.
Correct.
A secret ballot, you would never know who, how anyone votes.
It will be made very public.
It is a paper ballot that at the end of the vote, everyone's vote will be counted, everyone's vote will be told in the public, so there is transparency.
Absolutely.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that everybody knows that.
Name and vote will be read into the...
That it's a paper ballot, not a secret ballot. Okay.
Councilman Nation.
And just one other thing, um, to defend Karim's actions last year as president. Earl, when he, when he called for, uh, those roll call votes, he was following the same rule Q that we're, that we're looking at now, which now states, any roll call vote shall be made in alphabetical order by the city council person's last name, with the presiding officer voting last. This division of the assembly may be requested by any member of the council. Oh, wait, geez, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong one. Uh, anyway, the point is, yeah, yeah, it is. Uh, this division shall be, may be requested by any member of the council and does not require a second.
I'm not saying that wasn't according to our rules. I'm sure if it wasn't, our parliamentarian would have called him out on it.
Probably, yeah. But, um, but yeah, when Karim called it, when Karim did that, he was, he was any member of the council, so he...
Well, I, I guess I've been too lazy in the past to look and see whether or not I could do it.
No, all of us can. Could, still can, until this changes.
Right. There's been times when a person just says, roll call, please.
Yeah.
You've done that, I've done that.
We all have, yeah.
Just real quick, my example was not to attack anybody in the past, in this group. Um, and so I, I didn't want you to think that I was trying to single you out. And that's why, no, and that's why I use myself as an example. And I'm thankful my name isn't Zimmerman. Ayeo.
I'm changing mine to Zazar.
Any further discussion on, on this item?
I, I want to quickly say how proud I truly am of being a part of this council and the work we do to be as transparent as possible. I would put this council up against any other governmental entity in, in the city, uh, county. I think we, we do a better job thus far when it comes to transparency. Um, and we're always striving to do better. Ms. Spence and Mr. Hyde, we're always trying to, uh, seek better ways. Um, and having said that, uh, next item, please.
Special ordinance sixty-six, 2017, amending city council rules.
Petitioner.
Councilman Nation, you wanna start or you want me to start?
Um, you can start.
Okay. Let me find it.
I hope it doesn't take as long as the last one.
Oh, I hope not. The voice isn't going to hold out. Um, so this is the third amendment. Uh, I just wanted to clarify that we did these, um, we will prepare these in three amendments. One, because I asked if we could, and two, because we realized that each amendment did not affect the other amendment. So if something would, the council would decide not to pass something, they table it, it wouldn't affect the other amendments. Okay, um, on this one, we're discussing section five, I'm sorry, section four motions, and it is removing letter O. Resolutions or ordinances calling for the declarations of policy by the council on public controversies unrelated or not germane to the powers of the council shall not be in order. And it is striking the entire statement.
I would add to that, uh, to that statement of fact that, uh, Michelle just made, that, um, we're considering removing this, or I'm asking you to consider removing this. I remember, uh, being on the council before this was instituted. Uh, I don't remember it being a great thing. I'm right in that, am I not? Has, has this been in our rules forever or just looking...
No. This has been since I've been with the council.
Yeah, and since I have, too. Uh, I remember Cliff Lambert was part of it. Um, but anyway, my point is that, uh, we've talked a lot about transparency, we've talked a lot about serving the public. Um, I have always thought that, uh, we should be as unfettered as possible in terms of what we talk about and what we consider. To me, this is, um, in opposition to that. And that's why I have asked Michelle to prepare this, uh, this change, um, to go along with these other changes. Uh, and I'll stop there.
Would anyone from the public like to speak on special ordinance sixty-six, 2017?
Counsel.
I would, okay, I would just add that, um, one of my problems with this is that the words not germane and controversies are in the eye of the beholder. Um, and what's germane, or what's, what's controversial to you, uh, may not necessarily be controversial to me or someone else in the public. Uh, and that's the root of my, uh, of my problem with it. I think it's subjective. And I think that, um, if we truly are going to try to be as, as open and, uh, and accepting as possible of what the public would like us to consider, uh, then this works against that.
Ayeo. If there's no further discussion, next item, please.
Um, special ordinance sixty-seven, 2017, amending special ordinance forty-one, 2017, the 2018 wastewater salary ordinance.
Petitioner.
Counsel, Eddie Felling, City Attorney. Uh, as you're all aware, the wastewater utility workers, uh, the collective bargaining unit has been working off of a 2016 contract. We are now going into 2018. What that means is, we've been in some form of active negotiations since, well, about a year and a half now at this juncture. The proposed change to the salary ordinance you have before you would reflect a three percent salary change for the 2018 year. And that is pursuant to, uh, those ongoing negotiations that have been, been taking place. taking place. The contract has not yet gone before the Sanitary District, kind of prudent to come before the board at this point, or excuse me, the council at this point, to ask for approval of the change to that salary ordinance. Obviously, we have several union representatives here this evening, and primarily this evening, I'd like to leave it to the council for any questions you may have at this point.
Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak on special ordinance 67, 2017? Counsel. Councilwoman Crossen.
I would just say, this might be one of those nights when the President could, under the proposed new rules, take it upon himself to change the order of the agenda so that these fine employees of the city didn't have to sit here through all this other discussion, but that's my only comment.
Councilman Nasser.
One of the questions I was curious about, why is it coming before us, before the Sanitary Board?
Issue was discussed. Primary concern I have at this juncture, and anytime we have a change like this, this one's fairly unique because now we're into January. Normally, your salary ordinances are coming, obviously with budget, during budget time in October. Unfortunately, with the number of contracts we had to negotiate this year, things fell out of order. So in the future, we'd be hopeful we're not coming in January with salary ordinance changes. Primary concern is, if I would go before the Sanitary Commission, and again, being up very upfront, and that contract would pass, we would have a binding contract with the Collective Bargaining Unit, in which case, if we assume the Sanitary Commission would approve the contract that we've currently negotiated for, if this council would then not pass that salary ordinance increase, we would, off the bat, be in breach of contract with the bargaining unit. So using this from the administration's standpoint is an opportunity to make sure balls in the council's court at this point. I don't want to end up in a position where I'm fighting in court with Collective Bargaining Unit for a breach of contract before we even get started.
Okay. And you had discussed other bargaining units being up for negotiations. What are the status of those?
Currently, I believe we had, of the eight total units, we had seven full contracts that needed to be negotiated this year. Five of those have been executed. There are only two full contracts that have not yet been taken care of, and that would be the wastewater union is the one that's before you here today. The only other one would be the cemetery union.
And not, or street department?
Street department did not have an entire contract negotiation. It was merely a wage, what we call a wage reopener, which was just one provision of their contract.
Okay. And then one of the other things that I noticed in the contract was an incentive for classifications. Is that new to those contracts?
As an addition to the salary.
Or has it always been in there?
I believe the only change that's in front of you today is the 3%.
3%, okay.
And just to be clear, because I know the question will come up, this would only be effective, affecting those employees that are members of the bargaining unit. So anybody that would fall under the administration or a non-union member would not be receiving.
Okay. And I know you, January is 2018, but, you know, going back to the tax anticipation warrant, what would be the consequence if we were to delay this vote until we get the financials that Councilman Elliott asked for, as well as the 1782 notice?
Well, I guess that is twofold. How these individuals are paid is entirely separate from the tax anticipation warrant. As the mayor stated previously, you've got kind of three primary, you've got our main general pool, you've got redevelopment, you've got wastewater. This is the one unit that's entirely different from the rest of all city employees. They're paid out of the revenue on the wastewater side, so the TAW only affects the general fund operations. So...
Well, unfortunately, and I feel bad for these guys, that this council has to be a little bit more cautious because of the administration's actions in the past by not giving this information in a timely manner, whether it's 1782 notices or anything else. So again, I'll probably reserve voting on this until we get the 1782 notice. I yield.
Councilman Morse. Just, would this affect any of the other contracts we have with the unions as far as a Me Too clause?
There are only two bargaining units with the Me Too clause. The police unit only piggybacks the fire bargaining unit. The fire unit would be the only other one that has that clause, and that would be everyone, that would be all encompassing. However, they have foregone that provision for the 2018 year. So this 3% increase won't affect...
So it's not going to affect any other of the unions within the city?
This salary rate increase on the 3% won't affect any of those Me Too clauses.
Thank you. I yield. Councilwoman Crosson.
On the fire contract, that's for, that contract is for overall for how long?
The fire contract, I believe, is only one year.
It's only one, the whole contract is only one year?
Correct. We'll begin, and forgive me because we have so many, all of our contracts we've negotiated for are either one or two-year contracts. So we'll be starting fire again here within the next few months.
And the fact that this is taking place in the meantime, I know they foregone the Me Too for this period, that there would be no way for them to go back to this, I mean...
I don't foresee any way.
I mean, they may be asking for something anyway, so, I mean, it may be moot, but I just, I just...
They can't use this as a...
They can't use this as a Me Too trigger.
They couldn't come back on this, no. Anything in 2018, they cannot.
Or anybody else couldn't use it as a Me Too trigger.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I yield.
Mr. President. Councilman Nation.
Eddie, I'm looking under section four, and it says, "Commencing in January 1st, 2018, the city of Terre Haute will provide to each full-time permanent employee whose salary is established by this ordinance health and hospitalization insurance coverage through December 31st, 2018. The city will pay 100% of the full-time employee and 70% of the cost of the premium for full-time employees' immediate family, actual monthly premium." Can you, is that a change from the previous?
No. And just to be clear, the only changes, again, are those that are underlined on the first page with regard to purely numbers. The only, that's the only change you have in front of you. I touched on it briefly before with the council. Generally, all of our employees are 70/30 health insurance coverage. That's not applicable to several of our units. Wastewater is one of those units.
Do you know what the other ones are?
The other units that fall differently?
Had 100% coverage, health insurance coverage for employees?
Cemetery, transit, and parks, I believe.
Boy, I was under the impression that was only the cemetery board.
Well, and those are all to some, that doesn't mean, one of them is 80%. For example, our cemetery union that I believe is six members, I think they're 100, they're varying degrees of percentages. And we've worked to try and get those changed. That's always an important topic come contract negotiation time.
Does the administration have a goal or a strategy on where you would like all of these units to be?
Well, the goal would be an even playing field.
Which is?
Which would be a 70/30.
70/30 for all city employees, all across the board. That's a discussion that I remember having many times within this, maybe not this particular group, but over the years, as being a goal. And it's really with escalating insurance costs, which, you know, we grapple with every year, it's really hard for me to support anything that is paying 100% of employees' health insurance. I understand, though, that this is negotiated by the administration and it's part of the good faith back and forth. But I really urge you and whoever else is doing the bargaining for all of us taxpayers to try to get away from 100% health insurance coverage. I'll stop there. I yield.
May I respond just briefly to that?
Please do, yeah.
We work hard every year, especially when we go out to bid for our insurance. I know I'm anticipating some creative options coming up this year. The difficulty we have is that it is bargaining. So a 3% increase even wouldn't come anywhere close to go from 100 down to 70. It would outweigh incredibly the out-of-pocket cost. So of course, no bargaining unit's going to go from 100 to 70 for any type of raise. My only point in saying that is it's extremely difficult, and obviously, it's a goal every year. I think I made it fairly clear to those units we discussed or negotiated with this year, and with so many of them having one, shorter contracts than normal, that usually we have a three-year going down to the one to two, I can guarantee you it'll be a hot topic over the next year or two as we negotiate.
I'll bet. That said, I, you know, given these guys a raise, everybody needs a raise. How long has it been since the wastewater utility people have had a raise?
Wastewater's in a unique position. They have not had to wait as long as other units. And they are in a very difficult spot because they are used as a comparison, and they will be now this year. Previously, we've always had police and fire be the target. This year, I'm sure there'll be some questions raised with regard to their unit having received a raise. The key with them is where we ended up as a city as a whole with an ability to offer a raise and having no new revenue sources which we had hoped could possibly surface this year. And going back even a step further, we had fully anticipated hopefully offering a broader range of raises to many other units of the city. Not having the option to do that, the only one we could do that for is the one unit that is paid out of a different pool of money than everyone else. And with wastewater being paid out of revenue, and they're the only ones that are in a positive area, that's how we were able to justify that. So, short answer is, they are in a better position this year. But I'm hopeful that as new options become available, we'll be able to offer increases for those units that have gone several years without having an increase.
I'll say yield. Councilman Elliott.
Who negotiated on behalf of the city or administration?
All negotiations generally, those that may have a seat at the table will be city legal, whoever that head administrative officer is for whatever department.
Who negotiated this?
This, primarily, I'm always in charge of the negotiations now.
And anybody else?
Well, department heads are always involved, so in this case, Mr. Thompson would have been involved through the majority of those.
Okay.
Now, you've got to remember, negotiations are several rounds, and I can't tell you how many rounds we went through, but there were several, having gone for a year and a half. So in between rounds, obviously, the administration's brought up to speed, and if we have any specific questions, obviously, I'm not a mathematician, I go to the controller's office.
Okay. And then it takes, it's our approval for the sanitary board's approval?
That's how we've designed this particular.
Okay. Now, can I get copies of the new, five other new agreements that we've...
Absolutely, they're all public record.
And then I can put a request in now for every time there is a new one, that I just get it automatically without having to ask?
One thing I note on that, it's going to be difficult if you're not used to reading them. I mean, most of them are 40 pages, you won't know what's different.
I've got the old ones.
Okay.
So I can compare the two. And I've read a lot of documents over my years as an auditor, a lot of kind of...
Well, I'm not questioning your ability to do that, I'm just saying.
I'm just going to, if I don't understand them, I'll call you.
Okay.
So can I get details of the wastewater cash pool?
I'd be more than happy to request between, whenever you need them. I don't have those details.
I didn't realize we had, you know, all these separate pools, but I'd like to have that. Now, giving pay increases contradicts the need for our cash balances to grow and to reduce our short-term borrowings. I mean, it increases the expenses of the wastewater utility, and I guess part of council's decision's going to need to be, how committed are we to increasing the cash balances? There were some 20-some million dollars low than what we ought to have. I brought a copy, and I'll pass this out when I'm done, of the, a few pages of the State Board of Accounts, December 31, 2015 audit, where they express its going concern issue related to our financial condition. And then included in that is a, is the administration's response that's in footnote nine that I've provided here as to what's been done and will be done to address that poor financial condition. And if somebody sees giving pay increases in there as part of that response, let me know it, because I can't find that in that document. We also, you know, recall the bond downgrade last year. Talk about that from time to time that we're still dealing with. In the spring of 2016, we were over $2 million behind in funding our debt service reserve accounts related to our bond issue with the SRF. And as a result, we ended up having to approve sewer rate increases to help address that issue and also cover the debt service on Long-Term Patrol Plan Phase Two, some $37 or $42 million bond issue. And if you'll recall, a couple months ago, the price tag for Long-Term Control Plan Phase Two came in at nearly doubled, the $37 million. Didn't get approved, got pulled back to the drawing board. I don't know what the current status is today as they try to work through that issue. I don't know where we're at in repaying the county ban. I think the comment that was made last month was that we'd be able to pay $150,000 at the end of the year. I didn't think to ask the mayor earlier in the meeting, because I thought I'd get a chance to ask him later in the meeting, so I don't know what's happened there. We all know we've got an FBI investigation going on, and we really don't know what the story is with that. We've got the internal investigation led by city legal related to that, as commissioned by the mayor. We haven't heard any information as to what's going on there. Pay rates will only shorten the time period until we need to raise the rates again, and we've had, what, five increases in the last five years, I think, since 2012? And then I just don't know what kind of message that might send to the State Board of Accounts and the Department of Local Government Finance, pay increases with the going concern options, their going concern comments in the audits that we received, and how that may react, and whether or not we'll get a visit from the state's distressed unit board as, you know, as a result. I did pass out an article, I think it was last month, about, you know, the takeover of the Muncie School District, I believe it was. And that article said, whereas they had made some progress, they hadn't made enough. And I, I just don't know, without having our 17 numbers, end of 17 numbers, how much progress we made, but I can't believe it's going to be construed to, would be construed to be, you know, to be enough. So I'll pass this, pass out this audit information, and we can think about this one for next week.
Mr. President. I'm sorry. Councilman Morse.
Eddie, since mayor's not here, I'll just throw it in your lap. What's he think about this? I mean, has he voiced his opinion?
I'm not the final decision maker in any negotiation. Obviously, what made this situation a little bit different from other, some of our other negotiations is due to the time. So this, again, this started a year and a half ago. Most of what we've come to conclusion on with this bargaining unit has been completed for some time now. So what we've been doing in the interim prior to coming here is starting to work within the budget to try and make it as neutral as possible to change. So, Mr. Elliott may be interested in this. I think, there, how many individuals are covered by the unit?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine. About 50 individuals covered, 3% raise, only has about an $80,000 impact. And that's after you factor in not only the salary, but per February, all the other small costs that may go overlooked.
Could you repeat that figure again? What is that?
Approximately 80,000. And we've already, our new director's already come in, and through a change in how we have... And we've already, our new director's already come in, and through a change in how we have equipment leased versus purchased, I think at least seventy-five percent of that, if not more, is already going to be covered every year moving forward by having purchased pieces of equipment as opposed to continuing to lease. So, again, it's got a financial impact, what they've done, what the new director's done, and I give Debbie Pageant a lot of credit for this to help find ways to make it so it really doesn't have the impact that it might sound by saying, yep, we're giving, we're giving a huge raise. So, wrong answer, whether or not the mayor totally agrees with it, this is what we've come, this is the agreement we've reached.
So he hasn't voiced opinion, in other words. Okay. Thank you.
Counselwoman Ollie.
I got a few questions. First one is, when is their contract up?
Contract's been expired now for over a year.
For over a year?
Yeah.
But this contract will start as of?
This contract will start effective, it'll be retroactive to this year, the beginning of this year.
Okay. So if we were to table this and move it, then we would go back to pay till January first?
Correct.
More than what we have?
The.
Saying it was passed, I'm just, I'm just.
Assuming it's passed, yes. We would then go back, and there would, we'd have to find a way to make sure the union, union was also acceptable to it to get, you know, those, that over a month pay increase put into a paycheck. And we would anticipate doing that immediately.
And when we did our budget, was this already built in?
Well, yeah, you'd have to talk to the controller with regard to that. Again, we're not talking relatively speaking a huge amount of money. Eighty thousand dollars in the wastewater budget is very minimal. And again, having had made that up, having made that up already just through the equipment side of things, I don't know that it makes a difference if it was built into the budget or not, but I think that would be better suited for her.
I believe it was. I believe it was already built in, from what I'm looking at of our budget. And I agree with her all that, you know, right now, we're trying to, to get back on our feet, but with that being said, you know, these guys are paid not out of the general fund, they're paid out of their own, and I know there's been some cuts. I've done tour down there with, when Mark was in there, and I've done a tour with Debbie, and I've also realized that not only are they doing wastewater treatment work, they're doing maintenance here at city hall. They did the big police station when the stuff had to be hauled out of the police station. There's been some street construction work that's been done. So I think they've, with all the cuts that we've had to do, downsides in different departments, this department's kind of stepped up and, and helped with everybody else, and I commend them for that and for their hard work, because, you know, per their contract, they could have said, no, and I'd hate to see the price tag of what that would have cost us at the police station for the work that they did down there. So with that being said, I know a few years ago, we did longevity for the police and fire, and now firehouse taking their me-too clause out to be just between the two of them. To me, I just think it's been a lot of years since anybody's had raises. City Hall's been down from, some of them have nine, now had nine employees, down to four employees. My goal as a councilperson is to try to help these different departments, and I know we're tightening our belt, I think we're doing, getting some headway. Hopefully, if we have some new income or, you know, different things come our way next year, my goal is, you know, we've done police and firehouse their longevity, just go around with them being paid not out of the general fund, grant them theirs, and then next year, look at some of the rest of them if we get some new revenue coming through. So that's just my thoughts and where I'm at. I yield.
Counselman Nation, did you want to speak?
My, my question was answered. I was going to ask how much this will cost, and it's been stated it'll cost eighty thousand bucks. So I yield.
Counselman Nasser.
Counselman Morris.
You just said that there's some rebudgeting of the equipment leases and stuff, which will justify this.
Correct. It won't cover it entirely, but.
Dumb it down and make it so that I could understand it, and just get, email me that. So, I mean, that's, that's very important. I mean, they made, had some budgets.
It's going to save a lot of money.
Which will justify this, three percent, correct?
And it will be ongoing, it's not just a one-year fix.
Right, right. So get, email me that.
Absolutely.
And make it simple.
I yield.
Counselman Ollie.
Yeah, I think the whole council, because I'm, look at that eighty thousand, I'm just trying to figure out how the numbers add up, so I think that'd be beneficial if everybody got, how we come up with that eighty thousand dollar figure.
Okay. So those are two separate.
Right. Yeah, I would like that, same thing for the whole council, as well as.
Rough numbers are already being given, so I don't think it'll be hard to get that to the council.
Okay. I mean, I know the controller sometimes stresses out, I'm getting this information, so. And then going back to paying back, if we decided to do this in February, have we ever had an issue in the past where we waited till a couple months into the year and we had to go back? That wouldn't be a new thing if we did that, would it?
We would, we would prefer that it not happen that way.
I understand.
And I, I know these gentlemen would prefer it not happen that way, but if it's a matter of getting it through or not happening.
Have we done that in the past, or no?
We have.
Okay.
In fact, one time we had to go back a full year.
Okay. I'm not saying a year, guys, don't worry, not a year, so.
Counselwoman Ollie.
And with that being said, I know that with the situation down there, as the old administrator and a new one taken over, she has, I've talked to Debbie Pageant on, on one occasion, that there's some things that, you know, either somewhere, the payroll, different things wasn't paid correctly, and she's still trying to get those straight. So that's, I guess, where I'm at, that I'd rather either vote one way or another right now and not table it and move it to the next month because of the mess that we've already got trying to get the payroll straightened from one administrator to the other administrator down there, and then you have this on top of it, and I just see a foregoing problem that I've already seen going on. I yield.
Counselman Garrison.
Mr. Felling, just a quick question. Could you address any issues regarding retention of staff within the wastewater treatment group?
That would be a better question suited either for a union representative or a director.
I'm just curious, for the council and then maybe for the public, if we're having trouble retaining people because, you know, lack of raises, you know, no change in benefits, those types of things?
We can try and get some numbers put together with regard to any turnover rates, or previous turnover rates.
Okay. Thank you.
If I, Mr. President.
Yes.
One last, I do want to sincerely thank the wastewater union, all the members and their representatives, they've been extremely patient. Again, most negotiations don't go almost a year and a half, and we've had a tentative agreement reached here for some time, and they've been very, very patient as we've worked through other bargaining unit agreements and working towards finding those ways to pay for this, assuming it passes the council and the sanitary commission. So I wanted to sincerely thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Senator. I'm sorry. Counselman Garrison.
That made me think of one thing. We've been working on this for a year and a half, and you said it's pretty much been put to bed for a while. Towards the end of the negotiations, did you anticipate you would already have revenue stream in place for two thousand eighteen?
Oh, well, you have to anticipate that.
I mean, did you think that we already would have revenue that was talked about last year in seventeen? It didn't materialize.
Well, again, it was anticipated, but again, the reason why it was justifiable from my standpoint, that that was tentatively agreed to, at least with this unit, was based upon how those individuals are paid.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Counselman Nasser.
You said you'd been working on this a year and a half. When was the agreement finalized, before budget or after budget?
Well, I don't know that it's been finalized at all. It has not gone before our board for any sort of a vote.
But it's coming before us.
Absolutely. We have, based upon our tentative agreement, that's why it's coming before.
When did you have the tentative agreement?
I don't know that I can give a specific date on when that occurred.
Before budget or after budget?
I would say it's most likely prior to budget time is when we got to the agreement that we're at now.
Okay. I yield.
Anyone else? That's why the three percent is not a budget. That's it. Okay. You have anything? We, we thank you all for coming with, with, Michelle, do you have anything? George?
I'm ready. I just want to say.
George, go for it.
Move to adjourn, a second. Al, favor?
Aye.
Close. Meeting's adjourned.